I'd like to call to order the Monday, March 1st, 6:30 PM, public hearing on Council Order Number 2020-133, Ordinance Amending Chapter 375 Zoning, Article 7 Special Residential Regulations, 7.1 Affordable Housing Adding Section 7.1.14, Definition of Affordable Housing Order. In accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, the Finance Committee of the Quincy City Council is meeting via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QATV9 Government Access. And pursuant to the Open Meeting Law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings and transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. And at this point, I would like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to use the Raise Hand feature in the bottom of your screen. And if you're dialing in by phone, to please use *9 to use that Raise Hand feature. And please remember that when you're called upon, to please state your name and address for the record. So at this time, anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition, please use the Raise Hand function here on Zoom. I see Citizen Rodofel.
Hey, how you doing? John Rodofel, 62 Grandwall Road. Um, my question was, is this order listed online? When I went to look at the, the order, it was just one page. So where, where could you read a copy of the text of this?
That is all it is, John, is the one page.
Okay, so I mean, just because of the limited amount of information that was provided to me, I'm gonna have to vote. Um, you know, I'm not in favor of this because I'm not really sure what you guys are voting for. So because of that, I just wanna say I'm not in favor of this. I don't think you should rush to changing the zoning without making sure everyone who owns two families and three families or multifamily properties who are renting in the city or anyone who owns property in the city who has the right to do what they do as homeowners, they should know what the rules are before you make changes. It's making zoning changes is a very permanent change and we should be very careful when we're changing the zoning code. So um, I will post whatever changes that you make and I will share them with the public, but I wish you'd wait to make any changes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Starting one wishing to speak either in favor or opposed. Again, please use the Raise Hand function, but I do believe I see Mr. Bennett. Uh, if you could, I'm gonna ask you to unmute there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wasn't able to find the little raised hand feature. I apologize. Um, Mr. Chair, our members of the ordinance committee, I am Reverend Sheldon Bennett, residing at 43 Marymount Road in Quincy. And I'm speaking as a longtime advocate for affordable housing and I also serve as a member of the City Quincy Affordable Housing Trust Committee and as a member of the Board of Directors of Quincy Community Action Programs. Our, for community for QCAP, affordable housing is one of our priority concerns. I am a, I have submitted a detailed letter for the public record, which I won't read here, but wish just to speak to the main points. Now, I'm, I'm sure that we all agree that affordable housing is a increasingly urgent priority, but to achieve the city's goals in ways that are practical and equitable is a complicated business. So while I support the intention of this proposed amendment to specify affordability, the amendment as written, I believe, is incomplete. And as written, it may lead to unintended problems adverse to achieving the goals of affordable housing in Quincy as it may cause problems, for example, problems for developers in financing, planning, and managing their projects with respect to affordable housing. Effective affordable housing policy also requires flexibility. Flexibility is needed to address the needs of different, in, uh, different populations at different income levels, for example, very low, low, moderate, or workforce, and also to take into account the particular circumstances of any one development project, the developer's business plan for the project, for example, or government financing and underwriting requirements that may apply, prevailing economic conditions, whether units are rental or for sale as owner occupied. And developers and lenders and property managers on their part need well-defined specific numbers uh, to use in their, in their planning. Another complication is that a household's actual income or income eligibility limits and affordable rent schedules, though these are related, they are very, they are three very different things. And if these are not carefully distinguished, it can cause confusion. My, my letter gives a little more detail on this. Now, the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance, as it is currently written, does require the Affordable Housing Trust Committee each year to define eligible income eligible households. Let's quote, quote, "income eligible households", unquote, and to set the maximum rent levels, schedules for rental units and maximum sale prices for owner occupied units. Now, it is true that the IZO itself does not specify an exact formula or percentage. But as a matter of policy and government regulations in many cases, the committee in fact uses HUD AMI data uh, to define income eligibility and maximum rents, which themselves are calculated as not to exceed 30% of the income eligibility limit by household size. The percentage of AMI that is used to determine eligibility and maximum rents depends on the type of the project and what government regulations may apply pursuant to government financing, state or federal or local for that project. For example, affordable rental units required of a typical for-profit development use 80% of AMI, AMI meaning the area median income, as reported by HUD. 80% of AMI is the income limit for, for typical for-profit developments. Developers using trust funds to produce affordable units using trust funds, affordable housing trust funds to produce affordable units may have income limits at much lower levels, 30% or 50% for very low and low income, or higher, 110% for workforce housing and other figures for, for sale units of AMI. Or some mix thereof of these figures depending on the nature of the project, the population to be served and the government financing or underwriting for that project. And so with all this said, I, I just want to thank Counselor Palmucci for bringing affordable housing forward for discussion. And I want to also suggest that this may be the right opportunity to broaden the discussion, I mean, I don't mean tonight, but going forward, to broaden the discussion to give the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance a thorough review in light of now some 20 years of experience and changing circumstances, to consider what neighboring communities are doing. For example, Somerville, Cambridge, and Boston, for example, they've been continually revising and updating their Inclusionary Zoning ordinances and policies, and to adapt such practices as may best further Quincy's own affordable housing goals for its residents and workforce. And I also, at this time, urge the committee, um, as we go forward, to consider how the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance can be best applied to any future urban revitalization and development plan in order to assure that affordable housing uh, goals are met within those districts, while at the same time providing plenty of flexibility. The, as we look forward to Wallaston Center revitalization and any future downtown development, these are cases in point. So in conclusion, while I applaud the intent behind the proposed amendment, I recommend that the ordinance committee and the Planning and Community Development Department, uh, excuse me, I recommend that the ordinance committee refer this matter to the Affordable Housing Trust Committee and the Planning and Community Development Committee for the thorough review that it needs and deserves. And again, I thank Counselor Palmucci for initiating this discussion. And I encourage the, this committee in its continuing good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Bennett. Is there anyone else that is wishing to speak either in favor or in opposition to this matter before us? See Barry Fratkin.
Hi, good evening. I'll, I'll admit upfront that I'm no longer a Quincy resident, but I did live in the city for a few years in Wallaston, 100 Grand View Ave. And I work as a housing planner, so I would like to say a few words about this proposed revision to the ordinance. Uh, mainly that I applaud the effort to update the Inclusionary Zoning. And I think that really it needs to be discussed further to see what other changes should be made. Um, specifying 30% or below a household's income is a pretty standard threshold that's used throughout housing planning as the level of affordability, but it should also specify that those units should be affordable to households earning 80% or below the area median income, if not lower. Uh, and I would encourage, as Mr. Bennett mentioned, the look at Boston, Somerville, or Cambridge's ordinances to see what they're doing. They're much more explicit and have multiple levels of affordability. And I think that's something that the City of Quincy should really think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak either in favor or opposition? Okay, seeing none, I did just wanna make note that we did receive Reverend Bennett's written correspondence as well that has been submitted to the record. And seeing no further public comment, I will close this public hearing at 6:42 PM. And moving right along, I'd like to call to order the Monday, March 1st, 6:35 PM meeting of the Quincy City Council Ordinance Committee to order in accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. The ordinance committee of the Quincy City Council is meeting via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, Channel QATV9 Government Access. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci.
Present.
Counselor Phelan.
Present.
Vice Chairman Andronico. Eight members of a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, the matter before us this evening is Council Order 2020-133, Ordinance Amending Chapter 375 Zoning, Article 7 Special Residential Regulations, 7.1 Affordable Housing Adding Section 7.1.14, Definition of Affordable Housing. Uh, before we get into it, I know Counselor Palmucci would like to hold off his comments till after the presentation by Planning and Community Development Director Jim Fassies and his team. Uh, so at this time, I'll pass it over to Director Fassies.
Well, thank you very much, Ordinance Committee Vice Chair Andronico. Uh, welcome aboard to this new role and an opportunity, of course, to jump right into the fray. I'd also like to thank Counselor Palmucci for bringing this out as a discussion and to create an opportunity for folks to, to hear more and, and to talk about what we have before us tonight. Um, most importantly, all of the council and President Liang, um, you're giving us the opportunity to, uh, to give some clarity to, you know, what the role of the Affordable Housing uh, Trust Fund is and to provide some historical data as to the insights and benefits that the city and its citizens derive from the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance. And as Reverend Bennett mentioned, about 20 years ago, this was proposed. There's been a few changes and, and uh, some of them, uh, you know, definitely, uh, you know, could be looked at again and see, you know, how we can proceed to keep this a fresh ordinance. Um, tonight's presentation from Planning and Community Development is, is really gonna be given by Sean Glennon, who is the Director of Community Development, and Sherry Zo, who is the Housing Programs Manager in the Office of Healthy Homes, as we now call it, because it has so many roles. Um, it's important to note that, uh, you know, I also wanna give a shout out to Tom Fabrizio, who is our man in the mayor's office and works with us and comes to every Affordable Housing Trust meeting. To the councilors that have been on the fund and most recently, you know, obviously, Mr. DeBona, not Mr. DeBona, uh, Mr. Phelan, who has just joined the committee, and Brian Palmucci, who has been on the committee as well. And basically, I wanna also shout out to the most important people that are on this call, and I see many of them on, and that's the citizen volunteers that compose the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee. Uh, you've met Reverend Bennett. All of our members are community leaders in housing. And uh, it's great to just let you know that they're doing a great job. They stay up to date and they are very instructive to me. So with that, I'd like to hand the ball over to Sean Glennon, who has created this kind of an update uh, presentation that you see before you. With that, Sean, take it away.
Thanks, Jim. And if you just give me a thumbs up if you can see this presentation on your screen. I believe I've shared it. Excellent, thank you. All right, um, great. So thank you, Vice Chairman Andronico, and good evening, councilors. Before I get started, I'd like to acknowledge, as Jim mentioned, that Sherry is with me as well in her capacity as the city's Housing Programs Manager. Sherry's been with the city since 2017, starting as a grants compliance planner and also serving as a lead paint abatement program manager. And Sherry will be on hand for questions after the presentation. So Planning and Community Development has developed this presentation on affordable housing, which will include the following discussion points: affordable housing thresholds set by Mass General Law, Chapter 40B; Quincy status on 40B thresholds; accomplishments of the Affordable Housing Trust Committee; accomplishments under our current housing production plan; current income and rent limits; and some thoughts on the proposed definition of affordable housing. When we talk about affordable housing, I think it's helpful to start with Mass General Law, Chapter 40B, which establishes three statutory minima, as the statute calls them, or safe harbors, in order for municipality to meet its fair share obligation under the statute. A municipality satisfies its obligations in producing affordable housing units under the statute if any one of the three minima are met. Under threshold number one, a municipality satisfies its obligation if the number of affordable units in the community exceeds 10% of the total number of year-round housing units reported in the most recent decennial census. Under threshold number two, a municipality satisfies its obligations if affordable housing has been developed on land comprising 1.5% or more of the total land areas owned for residential, commercial, or industrial use. Open space, water bodies, and other classifications of land where housing cannot be developed is exempt from the calculation. Threshold number three is a complex and very technical spinoff of threshold number two and deals with land area usage on a case-by-case basis of comprehensive permit applications that involve very large sites. Since Quincy not only meets but exceeds the requirements under thresholds number one and two, we will set aside threshold number three for now as is irrelevant for the purposes of this presentation. However, we will take a closer look at the first two statutory minima and how they apply to Quincy. So under threshold number one, what we call the so-called 10% test. The calculation is performed by taking the number of affordable housing units on our subsidized housing inventory, which is a list that is maintained by the state, and dividing it by the number of year-round housing units in the city. According to the most recent subsidized housing inventory, which was just updated on February 23rd, Quincy has 4,238 affordable housing units. According to the 2010 decennial census, which is the most recent decennial census from which data is available, Quincy has 42,547 year-round housing units. This puts Quincy at 9.96% subsidized and represents a shortage of 17 units. However, there are a couple of discrepancies on the subsidized housing inventory, which when corrected will put us over 10%. First, a project on Martinson Street was unaccounted by 11 units. And secondly, the 28 subsidized units at the Ponson Landing Project at 2 Hancock Street are missing from the inventory altogether. So once these 39 units are added to the inventory, which is currently in process through our office, we'll actually be over the 10% threshold by 17 units. That is, of course, until the 2020 decennial census data is published and we'll most likely fall below the 10% threshold and we'll need to play some catch-up. However, as I mentioned earlier, we have also satisfied threshold number two, which serves as a bit of an insurance policy during times when we fall below 10% on our inventory. So to reiterate, threshold number two is met when affordable housing is cited on land comprising 1.5% or more of the total land areas owned for residential, commercial, or industrial use. As of October 2017, which is the last time we conducted a thorough analysis of this calculation, Quincy had 2.7% of land area dedicated towards affordable housing, which is 1.2% over the required land area usage to satisfy the obligation. And while it may not sound like a lot in terms of percentages, this 1.2% overage is equivalent to 67.2, excuse me, 62.7 acres or roughly 1.5 times the size of Ernest Brook Golf Course. With respect to the Affordable Housing Trust Committee's role in this overall effort, the Affordable Housing Ordinance, AKA the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance, or IZO, dictates membership of the committee and allows for up to 13 members with the planning director serving as chair. All committee members are appointed by the mayor and must have backgrounds in either banking, development, trade unions, faith-based organizations, or community development housing organizations. And up to two members may be appointed from the general community. The ordinance also provides up to three seats for city councilors serving on the council's housing committee. And as Chairman Fassies said, current representation from this body on the trust committee includes Councilors Palmucci and Phelan. The committee generally meets on the second Tuesday of each month. And although currently being held by video conference, these meetings are open to the public. And our next meeting will be held at 3 PM next Tuesday, March 9. The committee has jurisdiction over projects, quote, "where a special permit and/or variance and/or site plan approval is sought from any city of Quincy board or body to construct a residential building project of 10 units or more." Of the 40 projects that have fallen under the jurisdiction of the trust since 2003, there's been virtually a 50/50 split between taking units and a fee in lieu of units. The exact breakdown is 20 projects that have provided a fee in lieu, 18 projects that have created affordable units, one project that has provided both units and a fee in lieu, and one project that has provided both units and was also funded by the trust. So in actuality, the committee has taken units more often than it has accepted a fee in lieu of units. The committee has caused to be created or retained 499 affordable housing units, which consists of 411 units that the trust has funded, 72 onsite units, and 16 offsite units. The committee has voted to accept over $21 million in the form of fee-in-lue payments. These fees have been used to fund some very important and successful affordable housing projects, including the Atlantic Gardens Project on Berzani Circle, the Sixth Fourth Street Development, the Veterans Housing Project at 25 Temple Street, currently under construction, and several projects with our local housing partners such as Quincy Housing Authority, QCAP, and Neighbor Works Housing Solution, Housing Solutions, excuse me, including the recently completed Germantown House for disabled adults. Of course, the multi-nationally award-winning Watson on East Howard Street, which includes a mix of affordable workforce and market rate units spread throughout the 140-unit development. The committee has also provided crucial funding for some large-scale, extraordinary local humanitarian projects, including $1 million towards emergency housing and rebuilding efforts in the wake of the 2018 floods, $1 million towards rental assistance in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, and $1 million towards the Housing Resource Center on Broad Street in partnership with Father Bill's in Mainspring. The committee also provides funding to our Office of Healthy Homes, managed by Sherry, and to Neighbor Works to bolster our collective housing rehab programs for low and moderate income households. A primary example of this collaboration can be illustrated by a case brought to our attention by Counselor DeBona this past December, when an elderly couple was having trouble with their heating system. Between Neighbor Works and our own Office of Healthy Homes, the system was inspected, deemed inoperable, and irreparable, and a new heating system was installed with absolutely no upfront costs to the household. So while it's important for the committee to continue to accept units and has done so more than 50% of the time, it's also important for the committee to accept fee-in-lue payments from time to time in order to support these important projects, which dramatically improve the quality of life of low and moderate income Quincy residents. Not to belabor the point, but it's also worth noting that the average fee-in-lue payment to the trust is $80,000 per unit, while the average investment per unit from the trust is $21,000. This nearly four-to-one ratio gives us a much bigger bang for our buck, so to speak. This is to say, thanks to the trust, trust committee's diligence, we have historically been able to create or preserve four times as many units by taking and investing the fee in lieu rather than taking onsite or offsite units directly from the developer. This effort is also thanks in large part to City CFO Eric Mason, who helped our office and the trust tweak the fee-in-lue formula several years ago while he was serving as the city's economist. The new slash current formula more accurately values the replacement cost of units and thus has bolstered the trust funding in recent years. This slide here features some recent projects funded by the trust. The picture on the top right is from Mass Development's 2020 Annual Report, which features the Atlantic Gardens Project in Ward 6. The middle picture is an illustration of the Watson in Ward 2. And the lower project, excuse me, the lower picture is a snapshot of Germantown House in Ward 1. These are the three most recent projects These are the three most recent projects to have been added to our subsidized housing inventory and have added 177 units to the inventory. Now, in order for a community to claim safe harbor under 40B, it not only needs to meet one of the statutory minima, as described earlier, but it also needs to have an active state-approved housing production plan on file with the Commonwealth Department of Community, excuse me, Housing and Community Development. Quincy's current housing production plan was approved by this council in October 2016 and called for the production of 4,000 additional housing units of all types by 2020. Some of the goals we have accomplished by the housing production plan over the past five years are as follows. We have maintained community development block grant and home funding, and ensured housing rehab and first-time homebuyer programs are meeting housing needs. Not only have we met this goal, but we have also added a lead paint abatement program thanks to Sherry and our Office of Healthy Homes team. We have achieved annual housing production goals, both for market rate and affordable housing units. And while we have not quite hit the 4,000 new unit mark as called for by the end of 2020, this is largely due to the pandemic, and we project hitting that target by the end of 2021. We have monitored and preserved existing affordable units. We have coordinated with minority populations, are in the process of developing a communications access plan with Council Liang to ensure language equity. We've partnered with our local community housing development organizations, our CHODOS, to advance affordable housing development. We have utilized Affordable Housing Trust Fund money for construction and preservation of units. We have supplemented existing tenant rental assistance program. An example of this is through our Emergency Solutions Grant, which provides funding to QCAP to administer a homelessness prevention program for Quincy tenants. We've encouraged property owners to minimize in-home exposure to irritants and pollutants. This is done through our Office of Healthy Homes, which uses a federal grant to provide radon testing and provides for the installation of smoke and CO detectors in homes serviced by our lead paint abatement program. We've continued to provide services to reduce the homeless population. We have implemented a regional fair housing plan. Our current housing production plan expires in November of this year, and we've begun the process of developing a new plan to take us through 2026. We are also working on a couple of initiatives outside of the housing production plan. For example, the trust in partnership with PCD, this is not on the slide, but we are developing a, or we have developed a rent freeze advisory that we will be mailing to the owners, our property managers of the 499 units. Under the trust's jurisdiction, the advisory will ask these landlords to refrain from implementing any rent increases for the duration that the state and/or federal government maintain any eviction moratoria. And secondly, we are in the early stages of preparing a virtual workshop in partnership with Mass Housing to educate developers about Mass Housing, Mass Housing's Commonwealth Builder Program, which provides developers with a subsidy of up to $150,000 per unit for housing projects of 20 or more units, in which at least 50% must be restricted for households earning between 70% to 120% of area median income. And we believe this program may serve as a catalyst for the development of additional mixed-income housing projects with a focus on workforce housing. With respect to the ordinance before you tonight, the Affordable Housing Ordinance, or IZO, currently gives the Trust Committee the authority to define income-eligible households as any member Bennett mentioned. This flexibility is necessary because area median income thresholds vary by program, and thus the IZO allows the trust to adapt annually to local, state, and federal program The chart here shows the income limits as set by the trust effective July 2020. The income limits for households earning up to 50% and 80% of area median income are established annually by HUD for the Boston, Cambridge, Quincy metropolitan statistical area. The income limits for households earning up to 100% of area median income, so-called middle-income earners, are established by the state's Community Preservation Program. This chart here shows the rent limits as set by the trust, again, effective July 2020, and coupled with the previous chart illustrate that, for the most part, current rents set by the trust are capped at or below 30% of area median income, though admittedly not capped at 30% of a specific household's income, as proposed by Councilor Belmucci's ordinance. So, for example, a couple earning up to $77,000, which would qualify them as low income, could spend up to $1,925 a month on rent and still not exceed 30% of their income. If this couple were to take tenancy in a one-bedroom unit under the jurisdiction of the trust, their rent would be capped at $1,540 a month. This illustration is even more dramatic if you compare that to the market rate at some of the newer developments in the trust's portfolio. For example, as you can see here, a one-bedroom at the newly reopened One Newport Ave in North Quincy has a market rate of $2,045 per month, but the four affordable units that we have in that development are capped at the low-income rates you see here. Likewise, is at the Watson, a two-bedroom market rate unit rents at $3,145 a month, while a two-bedroom affordable unit at same building is capped at $1,849, saving, so to speak, of $1,300 per month, which is a tremendous economic benefit to those living in one of our almost 500 affordable units. Conversely, defining affordable housing as housing that costs at or below 30% of a household's gross income would create a double whammy, so to speak, for developers with on- or offsite units whereby they are already subsidizing rents in these affordable units, and this definition would necessitate an even deeper subsidy, which may discourage additional housing production. Additionally, monitoring compliance in units subject to the new definition would also be very challenging. Right now, it's very efficient to check household income and rents to make sure they're in compliance. But if we have to add a step to calculate 30% of each household's income and analyze their rent based on that figure, it will become a more exhaustive process, which, though certainly doable, will require additional staffing resources that do not currently exist. If adopted, however, I would respectfully suggest that the second sentence of the proposed definition be amended to change the term, quote, "household's gross income" to "household's income eligibility." And this is because, of course, the HUD income limits do not determine income, but rather income eligibility. And with that, I hope you found this presentation informative, and like I said, Sherry and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Don. At this point, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues for any questions, Councilor
Thank you, Chairman Andronico. Thank you, Rob and Jim, and to the folks who spoke at the public hearing. Appreciate the input. I wanted to start off by saying that the purpose of this ordinance wasn't specifically to make this change to the Affordable Housing Ordinance. It was, in fact, Planning Director Fatsy asked me not to introduce it when he read it. He's like, "No, you can't do this. It'd be a terrible idea." But I introduced it anyways because I wanted to prompt a discussion. I think there's a lot of value in having a discussion about affordable housing right now. So, I just want to begin by saying, I'm not going to ask for a vote on this. I don't think that this is, this particular ordinance is, does everything we need to do, and I don't think this achieves what we need to achieve moving forward. So, I won't be asking for a vote on it, but I appreciate Councilor Mahoney having this hearing and the presentation that was made. I do have a couple of, I do have a couple of questions for Rob, if I could. I assume you're there.
Yeah, Councilor.
Eye contact with you, yeah, okay. So, just going through a couple of things in the presentation. You had said that there were equal number of, equal number of fee, fee in lieu of units put in as number of units built, right? It was like 400 and something.
So, it's the 50/50 is essentially the equal split between the number of units that the trust has voted to take, you know, units onsite or offsite, and then they've taken a fee roughly 50% of the time. So, pretty much 50% units and 50% fee over the.
So, now, does that incorporate projects like the Watson where we paid in?
Yes, so that was the one in the chart where I had the breakdown. It was 2018, 1, and 1. The Watson was one of those one-offs where we received both units and the trust funded it. That's a very unique project.
Right. The best project. I mean, the Watson's amazing project. If we could, if we could do 20 Watsons across the city, I think everyone would be happy. So, I guess I'm just confused about that because it doesn't seem, and maybe I just don't realize it, but it doesn't seem to me that we're building that much affordable housing compared to the housing that's being built market rate. So, I guess I wanted to drill down on that a little bit more. Does, so, does that, does that take into account that all of the Watsons' units are considered affordable because they hit the threshold, right?
Correct.
Because I think the Watson's 160 units, and I think roughly 80 of them are either workforce or affordable to some degree, and then the other 80 are like market rate. But because it's such a high percentage of affordable and workforce housing, that under state regulations, it counts as all 160 units are affordable. It's kind of a misnomer almost, but.
That's exactly right. We're able to count the market rate units on the SHI because there's such a large number of affordable units, and it's 140 is the total.
140, okay. And so, does, so, does a project like that where we're getting an additional 70 units that actually aren't affordable but can be counted towards affordable, is that, is that 70 units represented in that 400 number of units that you had pointed out?
It is.
Okay, all right. So, I guess that's why I'm not feeling as though it actually is, because it's almost a misnomer that 70 units are affordable when they're market rate. I mean, I get why the state does it. It makes sense. It's to encourage more affordable housing. I'm not going to criticize that. But for me, ultimately, the goal is to build more housing that is affordable to people, you know, who live and work in Quincy. That's the goal. So, whatever definition we're using, you know, eligible income versus gross income or affordable versus workforce, you know, it's a whole plethora of vocabulary that we have to kind of work through and weed our way through. But ultimately, for me, from a policy perspective, it's, my goal is making sure that Quincy stays affordable for Quincy folks. We've always been a, you know, a blue-collar city, and with all of the development that's been happening, I think a lot of folks in the, not just the development, but also the value, the home prices, right? Whether it's renting an apartment or buying a first-time home or even a condo, it's becoming harder and harder to afford in the city of Quincy. I guess word's gotten out how great we are, which is a good thing in a way, you know, it shows we're doing the right thing. When people are fleeing a city and there's plenty of homes for sale, and, you know, you can't give them away fast enough, that's when your city's in trouble. So, I do believe we're heading in the right direction. But we just, we need to, from a policy perspective, make sure that we keep Quincy affordable for Quincy folks. That other, one of the other slides, I think it was the slide after the 400 units, said 21,000 per subsidized unit and $80,000 per fee, right? Can you just explain what that meant? I didn't get the 21,000, what that meant.
Sure. So, the 21,000 would be, for example, when the trust invests money into a project that either QCAP is doing or the Housing Authority or Neighbor Works, the average amount that we have invested per unit is $21,000 in those projects. Whereas, when the trust is taking in a fee from a private developer, the average amount we're taking in is $80,000 per unit.
Okay. Now, the ratio to that is way out of whack, right? I mean, the number of units that we have built at $21,000 contribution versus the number of units that have been built market rate that we've taken at 80,000, that 80,000 is just recently, but we've taken a fee previously, is way out of whack, right? I mean, we've taken a much higher percentage of fee in lieu of than we've given out $21,000 to build units, correct?
Out of whack, but in the way we'd want to, the way we'd want it to be. And it would rather be getting more in.
I suppose you want to get more money than spend more money.
Exactly.
But I mean, ideally, ideally, and this is, we discussed this at the Affordable Housing Trust in the last meeting, you know, ideally, and I could be wrong, I'm not a housing expert. I could be wrong, but I would think ideally, we want a balance, like an equilibrium, right? Where, where you're getting fee in lieu of at about the same rate as you're getting people building affordable units, right? And because it would even out, because we'd have more money than we're paying out. If we get $80,000 per unit that isn't built, and we're paying $20,000 per unit that is built, we'd be getting four affordable housing units for every one unit that was fee in lieu of. But that's not actually what's occurring in the marketplace. We're just building up the trust because there aren't enough projects for us to pay into at $21,000 a unit to build affordable, right? Is that fair?
Well, I'm not, I don't think I'd agree with that because we'd have $21 million in the trust if we weren't spending on anything.
No, I'm not saying that, and it's not a criticism. It's not a criticism, but I'm saying, we would love, I think, as a city, as a trust, we would love to keep funding, you know, a steady supply of affordable projects that we could contribute $21,000 per unit and get an affordable unit for. I think that pipeline isn't as deep, right? I mean, is that fair to say? It's not like we have tons of applications we're sifting through trying to pick which is the best, right?
It's a rolling, yeah, there's not like a deadline. It's just one time a year that we fund them. It's as they come in, you know.
Right.
They will look at them. I think the other thing, too, is that that slide was just to show the average over the 20 years. You know, the Watson, for example, we only spent $8,000 per unit on that break. So, it's, it's not, you know, so I understand what you're saying. That was just to give an idea of the.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not criticizing it. No, I appreciate it. It's helpful. I like looking at numbers like that because it's helpful to, you know, to see things kind of differently. You know, my concern with that, I guess, is, is that it's really just from talking to Neighbor Works and talking to folks who are in the field, it's really hard to build affordable units anywhere, not just in the city of Quincy. And, you know, the Watson couldn't have, wouldn't have been built if it wasn't for the city's contribution, if it wasn't for the state's contribution, and I think they also had federal government contribution. So, it takes a lot of, you know, the stars have to align for a project like the Watson to come forward. Same with the Veterans Affordable Housing, Veterans Building that was built, another great project, but it's, they're fewer and far between because they're so difficult to put together, because there's so many moving parts. You need, you need multiple pools of government money. So, I guess that's really the point I'm making. It's not as if, it's not as if there's a long line of folks looking to build affordable units at $21,000 a unit. Like, that's what we've gotten. We're very lucky to get that, and we'd love to get more. But it's not as if that's the kind of, you know, there's a, there's a supply that we can just say, "All right, well, let's build 100 affordable housing units. That'll be, you know, $200,000 or $2 million," right? And then lastly, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just going to say, I'm very encouraged by this Commonwealth Builder Program that I mentioned, which would be focused towards private developers, though, as opposed to the nonprofits. And that would, that's the one that will provide a subsidy up to $150,000 per unit. So, I think that would make it much more enticing for the private developers that, you know, are typically doing the market rate units, and then we're either taking 10% or taking a fee for them. So, that might spark more affordable development by private developers.
That's great. That's great. How much is that, is that funded to, do we know?
I want to say $6 million statewide.
Okay.
I could double-check that.
Yeah, I'm sure they could fund it with $60 million, and people would still be, be able to use it. So, I think that, I think the average, the price, price per key right now for a, for a two-bedroom unit in the city is $250,000. I think that's roughly what it costs a private developer, including land costs, to build. And so, obviously, obviously, it makes financial sense for them to say, say you built, you know, 10 units, right? And so, you have to, you have one unit for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. You have to build one unit onsite, or you go to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and you say, "I want to make a payment in lieu of." So, that one unit costs you $250,000 to build approximately, and you can either, or those 10 units, right, each, you can set up, you can set aside a $250,000 property, or you can pay in $80,000. I think that, that ratio is kind of skewed, right? I think the way we have it set up is that we're pushing people into the, into the payment in lieu of, right? I think, I just think it's, from the developer's perspective, from the builder's perspective, it's, it's kind of a no-brainer, like, from a dollars and cents point of view. And the folks who are building the affordable housing in the city are either affordable housing advocates or, you know, public-private corporations, or, I mean, I don't mean public, I mean nonprofit, profit entities, or they're folks who, who are either members of the community or care about the community and want to put the units online. I can think of a couple. I know in my ward, I'm always encouraging the developers to have onsite affordable if they can. So, I hope we can talk about that more, not necessarily now, but as we continue this conversation, as to whether or not and how we change that so that we get the equilibrium to be closer to even, so that it's not, you know, so that we're not pushing people one way or the other. Like, I also don't want to push people into only building affordable, because we want to have people have the option to pay in lieu of because we spend the money on good stuff.
Right. And prior, prior to Eric helping us develop this new model, it actually was cheaper to do the fee in lieu. And so, once this new model came in, now we're seeing that developers are more inclined to actually give us the units onsite because it's, you know, look at the bottom line. It's actually working out financially feasible more for them to just give us the units as opposed to paying what's a larger fee now than it would have been prior to this model being updated.
Yes, developers are not happy about the new model, that's for sure.
You're right, equilibrium, but with a slightly, you know, heavier weight towards giving the units, you know, onsite to make it more.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that's perfect. All right, so I don't want to hold you up, and other people may have questions. One other thing I wanted to address is that you had talked about, and again, I'm not looking for this piece of legislation specifically to pass, but one of the justifications or one of the points of opposition that you had is difficulty in monitoring, which is also something that's been raised to me when I'm, when I've tried to push folks into building affordable housing, when I'm trying to encourage them to build affordable housing. One of the concerns that they've raised is the ongoing administrative costs in terms of monitoring affordability. Now, that, that's on the. Now, that, that's on the, that's on the property owner and not the city to monitor that? Is that correct?
Not necessarily. That's, that's something actually that we're exploring right now. It, it could be. And some of the larger developments, those property owners have taken on the responsibility. But it's not necessarily mentioned to the developers at the time of, by the trust. And so that's something we'd like to explore is putting it more on them as a long-term solution to assist with those monitoring efforts. That would, that would go a long way to keep track of if the annual certifications that have to happen.
That's interesting that you say that because I was thinking, oh, wouldn't it be better if the city just took over all of that? And you're saying, no, okay. So we'll talk offline on that. Okay. Yeah. So the, the other piece with that is, you know, we had this discussion at the, the trust committee about. A project in Ward Four where they're building onsite and it's, it's not a rental. It's condos, it's for sale. And our ability to successfully execute or successfully be able to. Get that onto the market and get it sold to a qualifying buyer. Because the builders like, listen, we're just giving you the affordable units. What you do with it is up to you. And then it's essentially on us and whether or not we can actually accomplish that, whether or not we can make it happen. Which I think we from the trust heard that we can, but obviously that's a concern if, right? Moving forward, if we can't keep up with supply in terms of that, right? So you, do you see that as something that the city would get more involved in?
I do. I think in the past, the, the trust members had some concerns about offering for sale units, condos. Potentially setting low income people up for failure because, you know, interest rates are higher. And it just might be very challenging. We didn't want to see a situation where we took a unit online and then they couldn't meet the mortgage. God forbid they were foreclosed and then what happened to the unit? Now with interest rates as low as they are and some condos still being affordable. I mean, a, a single family price isn't going to be very affordable, but condos certainly could be. And as we saw earlier, actually, I'm not sure if I did have a slide on this, but the trust not only sells, has a cap on rent. But they also have a cap on sales price for condos. So we are able to, to limit that so that we're not setting somebody up again for failure. So that's something that the trust is looking at and would love to do more of that moving forward. Because first time home buyer opportunities are, are certainly very important. And if that's something that the trust can be more involved with, we'd love to be able to do that.
That's the rarest of all affordable housing, right? Is the ownership, affordable ownership?
Oh, certainly. Between apartments and, and, you know, ownership, it's very skewed towards, towards the rental units.
And I would, perhaps for future discussions, I would love to know if you could get, perhaps Mr. Mason. He's mathematicians on this, but I would love to know what the percentages of units built in total, like over a couple of year period. What ratio of that is actually affordable, you know, versus market rate? And what I mean by that is like not including the market, the 70 market rate units at the Watson. But including, you know, actual capped rentals. I, I think that would be instructive in terms of what we're doing for. Again, there's two separate discussions here, right? There's the one that you said, you know, you kept referring to as, you know, protective measures and, you know, things. Because we don't want a 40B project where a terrible project gets chammed down our throat, right? That's every municipality's worst nightmare. And some of our neighbors are dealing with it. Brantree's dealing with one right now and we're very upset about. So we don't want that, but also the end of the day, the goal is we do want to build affordable housing. That, you know, Quincy folks and, you know, blue collar folks can afford here in the city. So we can maintain our, our character that we've, we've all come to love and enjoy. So I would love to see if we could get something like that for another time. But that's all I have. Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation and for answering my questions. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Palmucci. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this at the moment? Okay, I did just want to add a very brief comment and then question. And thank you, Sean, for the presentation. Just very briefly, looking at the threshold number two that we are using. Sort of as an insurance policy there. You know, we're, we're building more housing, but we're not building any more land here in Quincy. So, you know, to use that, I think as our measuring stick moving forward is something that I'm hesitant to use. I know you sort of expressed as much. But just on threshold number one, you know, just for the calculation, we're using current, you know, February 23rd, 2021 dwelling units. But numbers from the 2010 census. And I know the numbers for that, 2020 census should be coming out, I think in September. It's been delayed for a few months, just given the state of the pandemic. But do you have any idea maybe how far behind Quincy may be when those new numbers come out? And the efforts we might need to put forward into 2021 and beyond?
I, I haven't run up a threshold number one, but I suspect, you know, we have at least, you know, 4,000 units over the past five years. And then whatever happened between 2000, 20, 2000 and 2000, excuse me. 2010 and 2015, we'll have to add those as well. So, you know, we'll definitely, we're at 9.96 now. We'll, we'll certainly drop below. That's why it's nice to have the threshold number two, as I mentioned, because we'll have to be playing some catch up. Once those 2020 numbers come out. I'm not sure what it will look like. The nice thing about threshold number two is, as you said, when, you know, we're not building any more land. So that percentage can only go up in terms of, as we, as we build a more affordable housing. That percentage is just going to keep going because the amount of available land will, essentially that denominator will stay the same. But the numerator will continue to, to increase. So we do have that going for us. The tricky part is that DHCD really only keeps track of threshold number one. That, that's why it's so important to have that subsidized inventory and trying to get to the 10%. Because that's something that they'll update all the time. Whereas thresholds number two and three only come up when a city exercises its right under those safe harbors. And that's when they, that's when they'll actually do the calculation. So as far as the state's concerned, they're only looking at threshold number one right now, which is why we want to keep shooting for that 10%. But it's helpful to have safe harbor number two available if, and when the time comes, 40B comes along, we could pull that trigger if, if need be.
Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, I believe Councilor Palmucci would like to keep this in the ordinance committee for now. And not seek a positive recommendation at this time. I do believe we need to close out this meeting temporarily to allow for the 7:30 PM meeting. So at this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, so, Mr. Vice Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and just recognize that Councilor Phelan did have his hand raised. So, Councilor Harris has a public hearing he needs to open. We can open the regular city council meeting and then come back into ordinance committee to continue the questions for Councilor Phelan.
Thank you for the clarification, President Liang. So at the time, we will close the ordinance committee so we can open that public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Okay, so I will go ahead and put it over to Mr. Chairman of the, let's see, Public Utilities here, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, President Liang. I would like to call the Monday, March 1st, 7:25 public hearing to order. In accordance to Governor Charles D. Baker, March 10, 2020. Ordering suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 38 and 20. The city council will be convening these public hearings via remote conferencing services. That will air on Quincy Access TV, QA TV and QA TV 9 Government Access. But at this time, we just were made aware that tonight's, tonight's meeting, including the previous meeting. Is being, is not being aired live. We received from Facebook, Instagram and Twitter, due to continued upgrades with QA TV. The city council, the city council will not be shown live tonight on QA TV 9. The meeting will be postponed to QA TV.org. By noon, it will be aired tomorrow on QA TV.org by noon tomorrow, March 2nd. And we apologize for the inconvenience. So at this time, the public hearing is on Council Order 20, 2020-012. Utility Grant of Location Mass Electric Verizon 202 Copeland Street. At this point, I would like to ask anyone wishing in favor or opposition to use the raise, raise your hand feature. When you are called upon, please state your name and address. No written correspondence at this time have been received by the clerk of committees for this item. So at this time, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor or against? Please raise your hand. Anything? Bueller, Bueller, Bueller? No? Okay, with that, I think I'm going to even beat my, my, my earlier record on public hearing. Seeing not, not further public comment, I will close this public hearing at 7:31. And we're almost on time for the, the city council meeting. You're welcome, President Liang.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Thank you so much. With that, I'm going to go ahead and call to order the Monday, March 1st, 2021 city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Anne Veronica. Counselor Kane. Counselor Debona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci.
Present.
Counselor Phelan. Counselor Phelan.
Present.
President Liang.
Present.
I'm, I'm here, Nikki. Thank you. Sorry, I was having some microphone trouble.
Yep. You have eight members. You have a quorum. Thank you, Ian.
Counselor Kane. Thank you. Thank you all so much. I'd ask that everyone just put themselves on mute respectfully for a moment of silence. And all of the women and men currently serving both here and abroad, as well as all of the workers still on the front lines of this pandemic. Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, could you read the open meeting law, please?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting. Or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived. By those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you. And in accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20. The Quincy City Council is holding this council meeting via remote radio conferencing services. And it is being aired on QA TV, channel QA TV 9 Government Access. Again, that will be shown tomorrow afternoon as, as Counselor Harris mentioned, it's not going to be live tonight due to some upgrades they're making. But in any case, moving on to the first item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
First, we will be honoring the COVID-19 heroes Quincy Veteran Services.
Thank you. Counselor Debona.
Thank you, Madam President, for giving me the opportunity to honor the Quincy Veteran Services as our COVID-19 heroes tonight. We're approaching the one year mark for this pandemic here this month, this March 1st. I want to thank Veteran Services Director George Nicholson for all his leadership with our veterans and their families. You know, during these tough times, Director Nicholson and Graves Registration Officer George Bouchard. Have helped with a Veterans Food Drive giveaway. And have helped veterans with appointments, outreach, updates and information for the VA hospitals in the area. Especially for the COVID-19 vaccinations. I also want to thank Christine Cugini for all her volunteer work. To make sure we move forward with the Reeds Across America in Quincy on December 19th of this year. It was a team effort on our, with our veterans, Nicholson, Bouchard and Cugini, as well as other volunteers. This year, we also had some weather conditions with snow on the ground. And with the COVID, we needed to have proper safety measures of social distancing and wearing masks. But that didn't slow down this team. They were able to honor the gravesites of all veteran cemeteries throughout the city of Quincy. I personally was able to attend this Reeds Across America event. And it was amazed, I was amazed by the team of cemetery department workers in Quincy. And volunteers that came together to honor our veterans. Lastly, and most important, it's been a challenging year for our veterans that have passed away. A huge thank you to Director Nicholson, Graves Director Bouchard and the City of Quincy Cemetery Department. For allowing the loved ones and families to have a proper burial for our veterans. They most certainly deserve it for what they have sacrificed for our country. At this time, Madam President, if we could, we, we have Quincy Veterans Director Nicholson. Graves Officer Bouchard and Administrative Secretary Christine Cugini of Veteran Services with us tonight. If I could allow them to say a few words, starting with Director Nicholson. Thank you, Madam President.
Of course, thank you. Mr. Nicholson, I'm just going to unmute you. Hold on a moment. I see you trying. You're still on mute. You can't unmute on your end. Here you are.
All right, let's try it now. Noel, Madam President, council members, thank you all. I was surprised when Noel said that we're listed as COVID-19 heroes. We don't consider that COVID-19 has stopped us at all, not in Quincy. We've got, you mentioned the food drive. It wasn't one. We went out, we've done at least four of them. Marshfield, Taunton, Rainham, Paget Field here recently. We've got another one coming up next month. With the clients that we've got, most of them have a hard time getting around. So it becomes important to us, since they can't come to the office anymore. That we may still maintain close ties with our veterans here in the city. And it's, it's been working. My phone rings off the hook. My staff is, is busy every day. And when this started, we tried to figure out what we were going to do. And Mary Ann McCormick, my admin assistant, came up with the idea of putting together for Thanksgiving. Some gift bags for all of our clients that we have in the office. And she and Beth and Christine and George went out. And we all solicited donations from places like Dollar Tree, things like that. We got some colorful bags and I had an office full of color until we were able to get all those bags distributed. And that started it. Once we delivered the bags, a few were able to come by to pick them up out on the front deck anyway. We began to realize that our clients pretty much have been keeping quiet and just dealing with COVID quietly themselves. And so we needed to step forward any way we could, every way we could. And I'm very proud of my office staff. Mary Ann, her husband Tom have volunteered for everything. George is on the road all the time with the truck. I can't say enough for Christine and the work she's done on, on the Reeds Across America. Scotty Logan and the cemetery crew for everything that they've done. To facilitate the dignity that we try to maintain through this pandemic. For all of the veterans and their families. And I'm thankful to God Almighty that I've got the good crew that I have working for us in this office. And I'm proud to say that Quincy puts its veterans first. And happy to be in the forefront of making sure that we sustain that. And we will. Thanks, Councilor Debona.
Thanks, Mr. Nicholson. I would like to open it up to both Mr. Bouchard and Christine, if you guys wanted to make any comments. And then I'll open it up to my colleagues. I know that folks will probably want to say a few words as well. Hold on one moment. Yep, I need you to unmute yourself. Christine, I might go to you next, if you can unmute yourself first, actually. Let's see who can unmute themselves. There you go.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for, for allowing us to come here tonight and to. and to honor, you know, the office and all that it does. I just started in the office when COVID hit, so I'm not sure how my timing with everything works. But I think most of you have heard me say how much Reefs Across America means to me. And working with Mr. Nicholson and George has been extremely great over the last year and then the prior years with Reefs. So I just want to say first, thank you for the support with Reefs and then just supporting the veterans as a veteran. I appreciate it, and it's it's great to come and work with the city that that really does put our veterans first. So thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. And George, I see that you're unmuted now.
Am I all set? Can you hear me out there?
We can, yep.
Hey, good morning, Madam President, and all you city councilors. And Nicole, how you all doing? You guys typically don't reach out to me very much. So when you do, it's usually a good thing. So I'm honored to be here tonight. I'm gonna touch on a couple of things that Noel had mentioned earlier in regards to burying these veterans in the past year. I'll throw a number out there at you. 161 veterans have died this past year. I'm not saying they're all COVID-related. It may be. We don't know, but it's something about compared to 98 from last year. So that's quite a bit. In regards to the food drive, we got together with WATD on a marsh field. They called us and asked us, you know, we'd like to do it in Quincy. We thought Page and Field would be the perfect place for it. And it turned out there was 40 vehicles that showed up, veterans and their families that day. And then we did another 40 deliveries right after that. So it was a great, great, great time. A lot of food. People were very happy, and it was a great thing. So I just want to thank you for having us and recognizing what we do every day. It's a tough thing to see people die, you know, from our office, especially veterans. My feeling is you can never give a veteran what that veteran is giving us. They've given us everything, and we can never repay what they've given us. So thank you for recognizing this, and we're gonna continue to plug along, do what we have to do for the veterans, because it's fun going to work every day to help them. So thank you all for recognizing this, and I hope you out to see you soon without a mask on.
Thank you so much. Again, I do want to open it up to my colleagues as well, if anybody would like to add anything.
Anyways, there's gotta be some questions out there.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I don't want to give George Bouchard too many hard questions, you know? We don't wanna, I don't want to corner him on anything. But to both Georges and to Christine, just a wonderful job, no matter what's going on. I've been around on the school committee on the council now for about 18 years, and Veteran Services, regardless who was in charge, was always there. I'm always answering the phone, always helping out in the cemetery, the parades, with all the flags. And the city always looks beautiful. So just a big thank you. It's nice that we have such a close relationship with all the departments in Quincy. But you folks here are close to everyone's heart in regards to what you do and what you bring to a veteran, which is probably a small thing for what they sacrifice. So thank you. Thanks all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Phelan.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to, you know, it's it's great to see you guys recognized because most of the time, Veterans Office works in the background and just gets the job done all the time. So to bring you out and notify you, and like a lot of city departments, you've had to work under the gun, but you have a special task of honoring, taking care of our veterans. I think Quincy does it better than any other city in town I've seen, especially in this area. So whether it's Reefs Across America or anything like that, that was a great event. I know that was tough. Christine really had a tough time, especially when we had all the snow and we had on cover the snow to put the Reese on. I was there with Counselor McCarthy up on Walston. And then luckily enough, it melted a little bit while we did the Sailor's Home Cemetery. So just gonna say nothing but great things. It's unfortunate that a lot of veterans have gone, and I've seen firsthand how your staff feels when one of these veterans go and the thankfulness of the family. Particularly, I've dealt with George, I've dealt with, you know, all you guys, and what they do for the veterans and the feelings for the family from them after a loved one has gone, and what they did during their life and what they did to recognize them at the end. It's just, you've gone above and beyond. So I'm glad, I'm glad we have you here up at the City Council to recognize you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Let me just do one last glance, see if anybody else would like to speak. Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, the Veteran Services Department is one of those that comes before the City Council to improve their budget every year, and it's always a no-brainer about the yes. They usually don't even get time to present it because everyone has already made a positive decision in the work that they do to support the money allocated. But I would love to, if you could highlight, you know, I know the constituency of the veterans population in Quincy is varied. And, you know, while I know that there's such a strong sort of older presence from those who have, you know, defended and served our country in prior wars, I'd love to hear a little bit about the younger generation, the 50 and under crowd that are being supported by the department, because I know that as the generations move on, there are varying issues that underlie each of the groups that serve. So I'd love to hear about the new members of the of the team that are being supported.
Probably the biggest single regret that I have with COVID-19 and them public not being able to come in is the significance to me of these guys when they get out of the service. I go out of my way. I've got over, well, coming up on about 50 years at this now that I've been doing this, and I know what they face coming from a mission-oriented environment to one where there's nothing on them but them. It's one hell of a transition for all of them. And I love the fact that I bring them in, or now I'm talking to them on the phone, review all their records, let them know what the VA is going to process is going to be like, dispel the rumors, get them set up, and it's paid off greatly. The reputation that our office has now for VA issues is extraordinary. I get calls all the time now outside the city, too, coming in, as well as from our fellow Veterans Service Officers looking for advice. And my forte has always been the young guys coming out of the service. I was there once. I know what it's like. I know the bureaucracy. And the biggest thing to me is to see to it that they have an informed experience when they try to deal with the government. And I can tell you quite honestly, we've been very successful with it. There were some, the new figures that have just come out from the VA. We've got right now a little over 25% of the veterans in the city are now getting benefits from the Veterans Administration, and there is millions of dollars more now coming in. I can't take credit for all of it, but since when we started. So in addition to what the city pays out and gets reimbursed to help those with financial need, we are also doing a lot to improve the overall quality of a great deal of our veteran population. We haven't hit them all yet. We still have more plans for outreach, including the younger guys. We know we're working on the monument for the Gulf War and trying to get those out. We've got now somewhere in the neighborhood in, I think it's about 1,500 residents of Quincy who have now served in the Gulf War. So they're getting to be a sizable and appreciable population in the city. And as word gets out, more and more, they are finally starting to reach out to us. And it is my intention that we will make that reach out worthwhile to every one of them we can get a hold of and that come to us.
Yeah. Thank you so much. I appreciate your highlighting that, and I appreciate the work that you guys do. So congratulations.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, George. And George, especially when you speak about veterans' benefits, your work doing doing that. And as COVID heroes, I don't think it was mentioned that the number of, because of the number of folks that you've shown, educated them about their benefits, they've actually had the opportunity to be vaccinated. I mean, as a city councilor with all, I know, I don't think there is one city councilor that hasn't had somebody approach them about getting a vaccine. But I know that through the Veterans Services folks, veterans, our veterans have been able to be vaccinated. And that is why you folks are COVID heroes. And that's not only gonna help the veterans, but actually help reduce the number of folks that are gonna have COVID, reduce the numbers as the number is already climbing down. So George, very much. Yes, George?
One of the great things about the VA right now, you know, the word gets out there that if you're a veteran, you have to be enrolled in the VA system in order to get their care. And at this point, there's roughly nine million veterans are enrolled in the VA system. There are about six million of those that are actually patients. The VA is taking, when you come in and you file to be enrolled, they're giving you tentative enrollment already. You just fill out the paper, you just sign the enrollment. Okay, get in the line, we'll give you the COVID test if you need it, or move over there, and we'll give you the shot. And I've had a number of people that, vets that have, I've come across in the last couple of weeks that have come to me and called to say that, you know, originally they said, wait till we heard from you, and the VA is not doing that. They come to the door, they get in line, and they get taken care of, and the VA is doing a great job at it. We need to get the enrollments. As a practical matter, as I know from my own experience in the 35 years I had with the VA, on the medical side, the enrollment totals play a big factor in the financing and the budget that comes to the VA. So the more they get enrolled, the merrier. So there's two birds to be killed by this particular stone in taking care of the guys. And so when your constituents approach you about going to vaccine and whether or not they, you know, do I call and make an appointment? We're always gonna say yes on the one hand. But on the other hand, if you happen to be in the neighborhood, the Brockton, West Roxbury, or JP, drop in. You won't be turned away. So if you could share that, it would be appreciated.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You know, I'll do that, I'll be doing that. And I look forward to the time that George and George, we can watch a football game again as we have in the past.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very, thank you for all you do. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our pleasure.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, let me do one last. Look, anybody else want to speak? Okay, with that, obviously, George, George, and Christine, you know, I echo my colleague sentiments, and I just want to thank all of you for your service. You know, not only are you being, you know, reactive to the calls that are coming in and have been coming in from all of our service members who need help. I mean, you're a one-stop shop for so many resources, not even in your description. And just I know from things I've heard from folks and having conversations with you, you never say no to doing what you can to help, even if it's outside of the scope of your job. And I think, you know, when it comes to people having so much pride, right, with this city and the pride that we have in this city and being so supportive of our veterans, it's because of the work that's carried out through the three of you with the projects that you take on, with the services you provide. So you definitely set a standard, I think, across the board, across the Commonwealth, frankly, for, you know, what Veteran Services truly is and what it means to go above and beyond that. So, you know, Counselor Debona, thank you so much again for bringing them in front of us tonight to honor them. I think that, you know, to continue the work that you guys do day in and day out, even through a pandemic, to continue those services is so important. So thank you all so much for your work. Please stay safe out there. And yeah, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, with that, Mr. Vice Chair, I'd like to turn it back over to you. We'll recess the council meeting and go back into ordinance.
Thank you, President Liang. I think at this time, we'll reconvene the ordinance, meeting of the ordinance committee. Before us was ordinance 2020-133. I want to allow councilors who did not have the opportunity to speak prior the opportunity to do so now. I believe I saw Counselor Phelan's hand at the beginning, so I'll turn it over to Counselor Phelan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Sean. I get, a question I have is on the 10%. I think I have the opportunity of being on the City Council when the city sued over this number back in the late 80s, early 90s. I want to see more affordable housing, but I'm also concerned that when the new numbers come out, when the census is released, are we gonna be put behind the eight ball again? And what my experience is, you end up getting a project you don't want, something that's too dense, too overdeveloped. Are we in any danger of that coming into with the new census coming out probably this fall?
Not really. I mean, it's kind of a yes or no. We're really not in danger because we have met safe harbor number two, which is the land area usage. So even if we don't have the 10%, we still have the land area piece. And as long as you have any one of the three statutory minimums met, then the city has the right to deny a comprehensive permit based on that. As I was mentioning earlier, the reason why we still want to strive for the 10% is because that is a safe harbor that DHCD regularly maintains and keeps keeps track of all the time. So that's the one that's just, it's easier to meet that in terms of state monitoring. However, if, again, if any one of the three statutory minimums met, then the Housing Appeals Committee, which is the agency that handles any now appeals, has to, at least that's what the state says. The law says that the Housing Appeals Committee is supposed to rule in favor of the municipality's decision. So since we haven't been down that road yet, we haven't had a 40B. That's gotten to that point. The Warren Out Project, excuse me, the Old Colony Out Project was was different because lately, as not a 40B, the residents and they would appeal that. And when it came back as a 40B, the ZBA denied it. The Housing Appeals Committee in that case voted in favor of the developer on a technicality, which is that because the ZBA did not deny the project within 15 days, the Housing Appeals Committee voted in favor of the proponent, not because we didn't meet safe harbor. So we really won't know what happens until, you know, the time comes where the city, you know, pulls one of the triggers to meet that threshold.
Are the units done on Old Colony, or those being built as affordable?
Those will count. Yeah, those, I think it's 40 units will count towards SAGI once they're completed.
Okay. I look forward to seeing the seeing the numbers. One of the reasons when I was asked to serve on the Housing Trust Fund that I was excited to was I think we need, we really need some affordable housing. And to keep people looking at the Watson as being a great project. But I know you've also done a lot of little projects, too. And I think sometimes those are also very important. So yeah, I'll look forward to see the numbers. I'm gonna be looking forward to working on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and keep that going. I mean, I learned something every day I sit on one of those meetings. I've never seen so many, you know, acronyms float out there that I have no idea what they are. So it takes me next couple of days to figure out what people are talking about. So I thank you for laying this out and giving us all this information. But I think we do need to pursue. The more we pursue, I think it's better if developers make the units than we have them. Because I don't want to see the city get into a situation like that. I was here when we were sued. What happened was a developer went out of business. So in the end, we, for about a year, it kind of locks everything up, and it's not a good, good situation. So thank you for your proposal. I look forward to seeing the census numbers when they go out.
Counsel, you just reminded me of something, too, that I think speaks to a question that Counselor Palmucci had earlier, which is that it might not seem like we're staying on par with the development in terms of affordable. That's because the trusts, keep in mind, only has jurisdiction over developments that are 10 units or more. So if a developer is doing, you know, nine units or less, we have no control over taking any units in those properties. And there's certainly a lot of those that come through. There's certainly a lot of those that come through as well. So, you know, we just have, don't have, don't have the jurisdiction to take any units or fee in lieu of those. So it's hard to stay ahead of it when we don't have jurisdiction over all the projects. Not that I'm saying we should, but the trust role is limited in what comes before them, you know, what we have jurisdiction over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Phelan. Any others wishing to speak? Madam President?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I just have one question for you, as I'm listening to folks tonight, and some of the questions they brought up are the same ones I had. And I just had a thought too. So I forgot who mentioned this earlier, but, you know, it's true that, you know, we're not going to have land that we can expand upon at any point in time. There's only so much land that you can build on, right? And so to that end, if, for example, I know that ACDC, right, they're an incredible organization, Asian Community Development Corps, where they purchase properties to try to maintain the entire property as an affordable housing property. Is that something that we can do as well if and when properties come online in the city? Do we have the option to, you know, view that property or sort of get first dibs at that property to be competitive to purchase it and maintain it as affordable? Or does it just go into the queue and we sort of matched up with other developers as well, needing to sort of battle it out for that property?
We don't really have experience in our environment, which is probably why we've never done it. We tend to defer to our community housing development organization, our CHODOS, that are designated housing development organizations. It's really, you know, it's what they do. So it's easier, I suppose, you know, to have them do it as they come in with applications. But that is, it's something we could do. We just don't have any experience in that area.
Gotcha. Okay, I just wasn't sure if that was something that we continued working with our partners with right now, or if that was something that we could currently do as well on our own. But I know that it is happening in the city, that we are, again, working with folks to purchase and maintain affordable properties in the city. I just want to make sure that we have all the tools possible, because you guys do phenomenal work. I mean, just looking at the slide shows tonight and seeing all those numbers, it's really helpful to to have that information in front of us, right? Because when we have it all in one place, it's really remarkable, like to know, you know, the tasks that you all take on to make sure that we are sustaining and providing additional affordable units in the city. And so it's always helpful to see that, but also it does give us an opportunity to see what we can do to give you guys more tools to to be more impactful as well. So if that's something that we can explore and that's that could be effective, you know, I'd love to see how we can be helpful in supporting that as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Any others wishing to speak? Councillor Devon.
Thank you, Vice Chair Andronico. Just just a couple of comments. Sean Glennon, thank you so much for all your help this past year with, you know, using some of the Affordable Housing Trust funding to help out some people in need. And thank you Director Fatsis for all your hard work as well and your team. It's been unbelievable this past year, not only with the Affordable Housing Trust that you're looking to get more units and the funding for it, but being on the Community Preservation Committee over the last few years, actually, all the years I've been on the council, I know that Neighbor Works has leveraged a lot of funding as well from the Affordable Housing Funds that are in the community preservation. They've come in front of us a few times and have taken advantage of the Watson that you talked about earlier with the combination of mixed blend of market rate, affordable, and workforce housing inside that building. And I think that's a that's a nice blend to have. But I thank you for all your hard work, Sean, and Director Fatsis and your team. You guys are right in front of things. As soon as that constituent called me and I called QPAC, but I also called and they reached out to you, and you guys really delivered the funds to help that that family out in the time of need during the winter. So thank you, Sean. Thank you, guys, for everything that you're doing. I know. And thank you, councillor Pemucci, for bringing this in front of for discussion. Sometimes we, councillors can be afraid to put things in front of to get a discussion about, but now it gets the ball rolling and it gets the wheel spinning that, you know, getting that 10% and keeping that 10% threshold throughout the city of Quincy is really important. So thank you, Vice Chair.
Councillor, any others wishing to speak?
Okay, seeing none, I believe councillor Pemucci would like to keep this matter within the ordinance committee and seek a recommendation at this time. So at this point, I will close the ordinance committee meeting at 8:05 PM and remain in the ordinance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. All right, and we'll go ahead and reopen the city council meeting. Madam Clerk, let's see here, number one on the agenda, please.
Presentation and update by National Grid on electricity services and infrastructure.
Thank you. I believe we have somebody here to present, but I want to turn it over to councillor Kane first.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate it. Just to set the table here, over the last year or so, residents in the city, especially in Ward Three, have been experiencing blackouts. We've had considerable number of blackouts over the past year plus, which have been received in a frustrating manner, given that we're at home during COVID, more people are working from home, people are educating from home, and there's been disruption in professional activity and just connectivity in general. And obviously, in the winter months, connections to things like heat. You know, we've taken these calls and the difficult thing is that National Grid, who is kind enough to be here tonight, it's a private company. They provide their private service to the city. I don't know the last time the city was involved in providing electricity service or infrastructure to residents of the city. But, you know, the relationship is such that residents are customers of National Grid. National Grid provides the service and the electricity, and that's that's the relationships of the city. Most times they're in a difficult place of remedying those issues outside of having relationships with the organization itself and advocating in times like this for better service quality and for hopefully an improvement of infrastructure. So the council passed a resolution back in January asking for National Grid to come here tonight to provide an update on the services and infrastructure in the city and just to give an idea of what's been going on, where the problems are and where the solutions potentially lie. So I appreciate Joe Carroll, and I believe Joe Cardinal is also on the call and who, I must say, Joe Cardinal, whenever there is a power outage in the city and I reach out, he's always very responsive. Obviously, we just want things to go back on and I'm sure things were being done, but tonight we need some answers. So Joe Carroll, I believe, will be delivering a presentation, and I know that, so I don't know who's in control of that right now, but through you, Madam President, I will pass that along.
Please do, both Joe and the other Joe. You guys are made co-hosts, and so you should be able to share your screens if you'd like to share your presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. Joe Carroll, we try to keep it easy in terms of names, similar to the veterans, George and George, I have Joe Cardinal and Joe Henry. Joe Henry is the principal engineer. So we've got three Joes on tonight. And just to, as councillor Kane had mentioned, and we certainly understand the frustration, especially especially during the COVID period where everyone is at home, whether working, school. We're on, we're entering the year, as councillor Devon mentioned. And we also had to go through a number of items in terms of our COVID plans, how we had to work in the workforce, how we had to stage, how we had to do various things to ensure that we had the men and women out in the field to respond to just normal, everyday type things. But if we go back to the beginning of 2020, a couple storms from that, but ever since the pandemic up to now, we've had roughly 15 to 16 multi-day events. And multi-day events is working storm rooms out for at least two to three days. We've had various higher level type storms. And again, not making any excuses of that, but the weather, the events, this has probably been one of the worst years in terms of storms in my 34 years that I've been around. Have to go back to almost like 2012, where it was really bad from that end. So what we wanted to do tonight, and as councillor Kane had mentioned, frustration, especially in certain certain wards that we've seen, we put together a real quick presentation. I know it's always within the council, and I've had the privilege of presenting in front of the council many, many times. So I know it's a very engaging and the question and answers are usually the better period of this. So what we'd like to do, and again, I'd like, Joe Cardinal has the presentation, just to go through, and it's really give you an overview of the electric infrastructure, because we can relate back to that in terms of the various outages, and then move into some of the other work that we're doing, both in terms of the damage repairs, what we found, then moving into general maintenance that we normally do, and as a result of some of these other events, how we're focusing in on certain certain feeders from that end. So I believe Joe was on, and I think Jen, I don't know, in terms of sharing the screen and maybe just go through the quick presentation, and then we'll create questions during that and certainly follow up with anything not known.
Thank you, Joe. Jennifer, will you be putting the presentation up on the screen that we can run through?
Joe, so you have the ability to share your screen if you prefer. If neither of you are able to do so, if you want to give me a minute, I can pull it up and share it from my screen.
Yeah, if you could, Madam President. I have it on another computer. I don't have it actually on this one.
You got it. Just give me one moment here.
Okay, thank you.
And as we're waiting, just to let you know, we are in storm mode tonight. We have sent notifications out. I know the last event, we were, we had a scheduled meeting for the beginning of February, but due to a storm, we had to cancel. So I do appreciate your understanding on that.
So while while waiting for the presentation to come up, good evening, Madam President and fellow councillors. Again, my name is Joe Cardinal. I'm the manager for community relations for National Grid on the South Shore. I work for Joe Carroll. That's my day job. And also, I'm the manager for National Grid's local municipal contact center and for the community liaisons during major weather events. And we'll certainly get into some of that in the presentations. As Joe mentioned, the, you know, the major weather events, the likes of which we've have kept us very busy throughout 2020 and all, and really on into 2021. And obviously, we're closely monitoring tonight with the with the wind gusts. So I thank you for the invite to allow us to come before you tonight to to discuss the concerns that councillor Kane and his constituents have in regards to the frequent outages and the, basically, it's been, as we'll go through the outages of the last six months that have affected the the North Quincy area. So ready to start the president presentation, Madam President, if you have it?
I'm just downloading it, so you'll have to spare with me. It's a good thing you guys aren't Comcast.
Joe, if you want to just walk through, maybe some of the, just go over the power, the substations and kind of go that way, we can quickly catch up to the other presentation.
Yep, that's fine. Basically, the first chart that we would look at if the presentation was downloaded would be the overview of the city of Quincy and the transmission and distribution system as it makes its way through the city. National Grid is responsible for both the transmission and distribution in the city. Chart two would would actually show that. What we have is 115,000 volt transmission system that comes in from North Waymouth, goes under the Ford River, heads down Washington Street to Southern Otterie, and goes into our Field Street Substation. It comes out of our Field Street Substation, continues down Southern Otterie, takes a left on Furnacewood Parkway, takes a right on Newport Ave, and heads down to our substation, which is behind 100 Newport Ave. That's that's the transmission system, and we also have a backup 115 transmission system that comes in through Dorchester, that comes into the North Quincy Sub, which is there for extreme emergency conditions. We have four substations in the city. I'll start with the North Quincy Sub that we'll be talking about mostly tonight. Again, that is fed from the 115 transmission system, and then it has eight 13,000 volt circuits that come out of it. That North Quincy Substation also feeds the Atlantic Substation, which is just a little bit further up north, and that is fed 13,008 volts. And there are four 4,000 volt circuits that come out of that substation. We back up to the Field Street Substation, which is fed 115,000 volts. There's 23,000, 13,000, and 4,000 volt circuits that come out of that substation and feed a lot of the downtown area and and down towards Washington Street and that area of Quincy. And then we also have the West Quincy Sub, which is fed 23,000 volts from the Field Street Sub, and there are 13,000 volt distribution circuits and 4,000 volt distribution circuits that come out of that substation. And when I say distribution circuits or feeders, I'm basically saying the same thing. If you think about your home, your electric panel in your house would be the substation and the circuits coming out that would feed your kitchen or feed your bathroom or feed your living room would be the circuits that we're talking about. Our feeders and circuits typically feed at the at the high level, about 3,000 customers, and and then there are some that feed them at the at the lower level. So if we can jump to the next slide. And this basically, again, shows that there are 34 feeders in the city of Quincy, and there are also 19 transformers that are located within the substations. And each year, we have to look at the ratings of those feeders and those transformers in the substations to make sure that we have enough capacity in there. Obviously, if we don't have enough capacity, then we start, we need to start adding. But as we look at these feeders on an annual basis, we we notice that they're in very good condition. Nothing is above 80% rating in the the feeders and nothing above 63% rating in the transformers. What that means is, is that we're ready to accept increased electric load and in major economic development in the city of Quincy. Our distribution system is ready for that without without any issues. And I think it's also important to note, while we're doing this, we're also monitoring every feeder. We're monitoring them for the outages. We have to report to the DPU every year on feeders that are we're having issues with, like the two feeders in North Quincy that we're going to talk about. We have to report that to the DPU that we're having issues. DPU wants a plan from us on how we're going to fix that so that that does not continue. If we can switch to the next slide, please. Major weather events and the electric reliability of the system. Very, very important, and we found that out in the in the last 12 months. We've, since February of 2020, we've had to activate ourselves for, on 15 separate occasions for weather-related issues that could happen to the to the electric system. Basically, what we do when we see a storm coming, we activate our internal crews, we look at wires down crews, because we're going to have wires down, they're going to, that are going to come down from trees and branches bringing down our wires. We have damage assessment crews, substation crews that are standing by in the substations in case there are issues, and we upgrade our engineering staff for the storm. Wires down crews, we grab, we grab crews from the gas side of the house to help us on the on the wires down, because sometimes when there's a major wind event, we have so many wires down that we have to get calling the gas side of the house. We're also activating external crews. We're calling in contractors from other areas of the country, along with Canada. We've got a great relationship. We're calling in contractors from other areas of the country, along with Canada. We've got a great relationship up with Canada. They, on many events that we've had, they're sending crews down from Canada to, to assist us. The other big thing is, is communication with our cities and towns when we know these events are coming. We have to make sure that we're reaching out to our cities and towns. We're letting, letting them know what type of event we're planning for. And when I say what type of event, we have a listing of five separate events. And basically, we can tell by what we're expecting for weather, whether it's heavy snow, whether it's increased winds. What, whatever we're getting, we basically know the type, we basically can tell what type of outages we're going to have. We can usually predict how many customers are going to be out and for how long are they going to be out. So that notification goes out to all the cities and towns. In the city of Quincy, we send that out to the mayor's office. We send that out to DPW. We send it out to police. We send it out to fire. And I believe Parks and Recreation is also on the list and it goes to the Emergency Management Director. Anybody that wants to get on that notification list can get on that list just by sending me an email and say, yeah, please include me. And I would certainly add anybody that wanted to be on that list. A couple of other things that we do. We open a storm room locally when we have, we're preparing for these events. So what we do is we dispatch locally out of the Brockton office. Makes it easier for Joe Carroll and myself to actually walk in critical issues that municipals are dealing with during these storm events so that we can respond to them quickly. We also open a municipal room, which is staffed 24/7, which is a phone number for city officials to call into us to get outage information. Typically that is open in Brockton. Last year, it's obviously been virtual, but it's still worked very well because Joe and myself are usually in the Brockton office and that info is funneled to us. And then we funnel it right into the storm room so that it can be dispatched. Activating community liaisons. We have a liaison for every city and town on the South Shore. We send that liaison out. He reaches out to the city of town before the event, lets them know he's activated. And they tell him where they want him stationed for the storm. Do they want him in the fire headquarters? Do they want him in an EOC if the EOC has been activated? He's more or less there for the city of town to get their priorities and get information from us back in, back in the storm room so that there is a line of communication at all times during these are major events. If we could switch to the next slide. What I'd like to do here is basically, there's two feeders that Council Kane, we've been having the issues with in out of the North Quincy Sub that have resulted in the, in the majority of the outages. So what I wanted to do was I wanted to list the outages, list what has caused these outages and what our plan is to, to, to reduce these outages from happening. So what I did was I went back to January of 2018 and looked at the major outages on the 11W4 feeder and we'll look at the 11W1 in a minute. In 2018, we had one major outage on the 11W4. We had an animal contact in the substation locked out the feeder. Again, it locked out to about 3,000 customers until we were able to get out to the substation, find out what was going on, do some switching and bring everybody back up. 2019, we had one major outage on the 11W4 and that was a tree fell on three-phase wire at Harvard Street. The first half of 2020, we actually had good reliability on the 11W4. Eight and a half months of good reliability. And then on 9/30 is when we had the first of, I believe, six incidents that sort of has shown the, the issues that we've, we were having. The first one was a tree fell while two of the circuits were tied together. And that caused an outage for quite a few customers. And that was a major weather event, one of the 15 that we talked about earlier. On 10/26, we had an internal switching error on our transmission system from our dispatch center. And we lost the transmission supply to the North Quincy Sub. That was our fault. We rectified that as quickly as we noticed that hap, as happened. So that was like about a 15, 20-minute outage. 10/27, we had an underground cable failure. And, you know, I'm not an engineer. But my guess is that cable might have failed because of what happened the day before. The transmission issue, just the surge of the power going off and the power coming back on might have caused might have caused an issue on that underground piece of cable that failed. That cable, our underground crews found that failed cable. They've replaced it. They pulled it out at Manhole 112 on Newport Ave. Again, that cable has been replaced. It's new cable in there. 10/30, we had a tree branch as the 1W5 was actually picking up the 11W4 while we were still replacing that cable. And that was another major one, another major event. So again, we had a lot of customers that were out until we could make the repairs. And then we jumped to 12/29. We had an overhead fuse failure on Granger Street that caused the feeder to lock out. We made the repairs pretty quickly on that. And then a couple of hours later, we had an underground cable failure. Again, we assume that maybe the overhead fuse failing earlier might have caused the cable to fail later on that night. Again, that, all that underground cable has been replaced from Manhole 167 to Manhole 171. It's all been out and new cable is, has been put in place. And then we jumped to 2021. On February 1, we had a loss of transmission supply from the Edgar Station. As I had mentioned, our transmission supply comes in from North Waymouth, from EverSource. They actually have two feeds. They had one feed down for repairs and then they had an issue on the other one. So they were quick to get that back restored for us. So we lost the transmission supply for a short period of time. February 7, we had an overhead wire come down because of the weight of snow on it, another major weather event that affected us. That was out for a couple of hours until we could make those repairs. And then on the last outage was on February 15. At 100 Hancock Street, we had a switchgear and underground cable fail there causing a couple of feeders to lock out and also the feeder that serves the Atlantic Sub. And that locked the Atlantic Sub out. We were able to do a lot of switching to get as many customers back up as possible. But some customers stayed out for the duration until we made temporary repairs at 100 Hancock Street. We are in the process of now of lining up an outage for 100 Hancock Street so that we can replace all of that cable and we can replace that switchgear. So as we've gone through the outages, what are we doing short term? What are we doing long term so that this doesn't continue? Basically, on, on the short term, we've replaced all that cable. We should not have underground cable failures. There's a short distance of underground cable that comes out of the substation, goes down Newport Ave and goes to West Quanum Street. And then it comes, it rises up to overhead. So we replaced most of that cable. We're hoping that there shouldn't be any more issues there on that. We recognize that we need some more tree trimming that needs to be done. We've scheduled this entire 11W4 feeder to be trimmed out. Awaiting permits from the city arborist to give us the okay and we would, we will start tree trimming on that. Longer term, we've assigned this feeder to one of our local engineers. And I talked to him today. He plans on going out this week. And what he basically does is he drives the main line. He drives all the, the streets of this feeder. He looks at everything. He looks at the poles. He looks at the wire, the transformers, the cutouts, the fuses, everything. So some of the things that we'll probably be looking at, there'll probably be poles that need to be replaced, hopefully. Some, or address some animal protection, maybe lightning arrests, all things that he'll be looking at. And as soon as he finishes that up, he'll write up the work orders and then that'll move to, to scheduling. If we could, we could jump to the, to the next slide. And the 11W1 is the other feeder that comes out of the North Quincy Substation that's had some issues. So again, I went back to January 2018 to look at the major outages out of that feeder. 2018 was a great year. No major outages on it. 2019, we had animal contact on the reactors in the, in the substation. Again, eight, nine months later, we had animal contact on the reactors in the substation. And July of 2020, we had an underground cable fault. I was told that that cable had been replaced also. And then the day after, July 27, we had two circuits that were carrying each other. One, one circuit was carrying the other circuit and it tripped due to over, overcurrent during hot weather. We were able to get that back, switched up and back up quickly. August 15, we had animal contact again on the reactors. And then on 10/26, we had the internal switching error on the transmission system that I mentioned earlier. Basically, six outages in three years, three of them being the animal contact on the reactors. So obviously the question to me is, is what are you doing to stop the animal contact on the reactors? So I was able to get a quote from the substation supervisor. I asked him, you know, what are we doing? What have we done to, to stop this from happening? And his quote to me goes, "We've added as much animal guard material as we can fit on the reactors." "We've trimmed the overhanging trees way back and also added an ultrasonic noise maker to keep animals away." "We plan on changing out one set of the reactors and are adding longer insulators between the reactors when we do it." This will open the gap between them. And what he means, opening the gap is, is the hope is that and try not to be grotesque, but the squirrels get into the gap and they make contact and that's what causes the outage. Obviously, it kills the squirrel and it causes the outage. So hopefully with what he's already been able to do, short-term fix, we shouldn't see the issues on the, on the reactors. That feeder has already gone to engineering. Engineering has already driven the main line and looked at everything on that feeder. And they've come back to me telling me that they've already written up work orders and what they saw on there is similar to what I mentioned. We'll probably do on the 11W4. Notice there's some areas where lightning arrests can be added. Animal guards on transformers. A few locations at the, the crossarms need to be changed out. Replacing a few sections of overhead wire that has frayed. We have a few pole chains outs. And again, tree trimming is important issue on this feeder, 11W1. This is also another feeder that we would love to get into the hands of our arborists and our tree crews so that we can get them out there trimming this area. Again, we're awaiting on, on permit for that. If we could, we can switch to the next one. And we could talk a little bit about the, the trimming. Every circuit, every feeder, the 34 feeders that we have in the city of Quincy are trimmed every five years. We have specific specifications that we use to make sure that we achieve the clearances from the electric equipment. Typically, it's six feet off of either side of the wire and 10 feet above and 10 feet below the wire. That's what we really like to have when we're, when we're trimming. We need approvals and permit from the city of Quincy arborist before we can trim any public trees. And we also need approval from homeowners if a tree is on private property. We have 21 of the 34 circuits in the city of Quincy planned for trimming in fiscal year 2022. And that is about 135 miles of trimming. And as I mentioned, the 11W4 and the 11W1 are included in that list of areas to be trimmed. And just to mention, there was 12 circuits that were already trimmed in fiscal year 18, 19 and 20, which included about 102 miles. But as I mentioned, it's, it's every five-year cycle. So it's continuous that we're going to be trimming the trees in the city. And, and as I mentioned, when we say we need approval from homeowners, if we're going down a certain street and we're looking at a tree that is in a homeowner's property, we have to knock on the door. We have to get the okay from them to make sure they're okay with us trimming. Or, or if an extreme situation where we have to take the tree down, we're obviously getting the okay from them before we do that. And if we could, one more slide. This is basically the North Quincy Transmission Cable Project. As I had mentioned earlier on in the presentation, we have our 115 transmission line that comes in from North Waymouth that goes to Field Street. And then from Field Street, it goes to the North Quincy Substation. It's 115,000 volts. What our plan is, is that we are looking to change and that transmission system from Field Street to North Quincy and put it in a typical manhole and duct system. Right now, it is direct buried in sand with a concrete cap over the top of it. We want to put it in a typical manhole and duct system where you have concrete not only on the top, you have it down the sides and it's also protected inside. This is a $75 billion project and this will provide safe, reliable and updated transmission system to the city of Quincy. Again, the route is starting at Field Street, coming out Field Street onto Southern Ottery, going down Southern Ottery, taking a left on Furnacebrook Parkway and then taking a right on Newport Ave and going down to just about 100 Newport Ave, taking a right, going through their property and into our substation. That is actually the route of the existing transmission system. We're going to be following that, that same path. We're hoping to start construction spring of '22, next year. We've been working with the DPW team and the officials for quite a while now. And, you know, talking with them on what their preference is and what their thoughts are on this project and how we can work well with them. We've also working with other departments in regards to construction, traffic mitigation, permitting and, and public outreach. Updates on going to city officials and the public. We've had two virtual open houses with the general public. Every arbiter that is on the route, whether it was commercial or residential, received an invite to the, to the open houses. They weren't that great attendance, attendance yet, but we're assuming as we get closer to the project and the word gets out a little bit more, then the, the attendance will increase. And there's also an active website, website, fact sheet and the continued meetings with the mayor's office and obviously with the Quincy City Council. And we also can have one-on-ones with any council member that might be affected by this project or, or just wants to get more information on this. And obviously we'll be before the council to get a grant of location for this project when, when we're ready for that. So basically that is the, the presentation. I think a lot in there, but basically we understand that there have been problems and there are issues. And with everybody dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic and everybody working from home, it's, it's obviously makes it much worse when you have a power outage when you're trying to work from home or you're trying to school from home. It, it, it is very difficult. We've made a concerted effort to try to go after these feeders right away and do as much as we can as, as quickly as possible to try to mitigate the, the outages. And, and hopefully, within a short period of time, we'll be able to say that we, we've accomplished what we wanted to do on these feeders. So I will, I'll turn it back to Madam President. Any other councils that have any questions or concerns they want to bring up?
Me too. Well, I'm going to Counsel Harris first and then to Counsel Kane. Counsel Harris?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Council Kane for getting this on the agenda. And I want to thank Joe and Joe. And I've, I've known Joe's, Joe Carroll's in-laws my whole growing up in Dorchester. And I hope I don't show my Dorchester right now because I want to try to keep my cool. Because on President's Day, 2/15, that was the last one that was presented. Caused major havoc and for the folks and, and granted, power outages happened. But I was given information that there was an outside private company that caused this. Is that, is that accurate or is that inaccurate? That was what I was given. That was what I was given to tell the people, the seniors, the parents with kids, what I had to tell them. And when I told them, they didn't buy it.
Yeah, I can, if I can answer. When we first went out there to location and we opened up the switchgear where the cables come up underground and connect to the switchgear, we saw that one of the brackets had been pulled down. So we looked between the switchgear and the manhole and we saw actually a trench in the, in the parking lot. And we had been told that it had been a contractor out there. So there was a lot of assumptions going on that maybe the contractor, when he was out there, might have dug into the conduit or nicked the cable. On further results, we've, we've looked there. We do not find any damage. We do not find any damage. So I'm not sure where it, it came from, that there was, that it was a contractor through a paddy. That's, that's not the case.
But on that, if I could just follow up because I was out there as well. The conduit actually runs from right there in handcart, actually goes underneath one hundred, comes out in the far back, council in the back. So what we did is we, instead of digging all over, there was trench work on the street. We dug on property. This is what we're doing for the outage. We're actually cameraing the whole service going underneath. We're pulling that outage. And in, in order to just address it, no matter what, we are going to replace all the cables into that and also the switchgear in the back. So what, when I was out there, and I was out there for several hours, speaking to folks out that way, that was the additional thing that we're looking at. We still haven't crossed that off the list because something had caused that switchgear to pull all the way down. It, it isn't, it's in a closed bank. There's no other truck trafficking around. There's no other issues for that to be physically pulled down from that end. So instead of digging all the handcart, what we're doing is now just replacing the whole section. We are cameraing everything underneath the building because it does run in there. We did go inside the building to see if we saw anything in there. But unfortunately, it was no visible to see where our cable is. So it is underground from the front all the way to the back. So we're able to isolate now one hundred hand, handcart. Working with that customer to isolate them. They have generation there. They're going to run, that's probably going to be about a, a ten or twelve-hour window for them to do it. And yes, we are cameraing to see what else could have gone from the underneath all the way to the back. But again, we just want to get it repaired so it doesn't impact us again.
Thank you. And I, and I don't mean to, I'm, I'm not trying to shoot the messages, messenger.
No.
Because that's what we are on, on this council. We're the messengers and people are looking for answers. Can I ask you, the North Quincy MBTA project, does that have anything to do with any of these outages? That's the question I'm being asked.
No, there's, there's no reason. They're just being tapped off of one of our existing feeders, our distribution feeders that comes out of the North Quincy Sub to feed them. As, as we mentioned earlier on in the presentation, we've got plenty of load in the substations and we've got plenty of load on the feeders. So no construction that's ongoing. These are just outage events separate from anything else.
And I, and I appreciate, I appreciate you folks coming here this evening and answering these questions. I guess my, my frustration is probably something that we need to be addressed, I think, on a council level for the city. Because emergency management is, is, is giving this information. And I think that there has to be a greater information sent out. And we talked about, there was mentioned about how students with their schools and learning. And I think I mentioned at the last meeting is, and this is addressing, and I'd like to speak to Mr. Walker about this. I mean, we have an eight-hour, eight-hour outage with seniors. We have an outage when there's a, a school, the, the learning program, computers aren't working. A robo-call gets sent out, you know? And, and there are folks, I mean, I mean, if you were a senior that's been locked in your, your house during this whole, this whole time, I can't even imagine, you know, the helplessness I felt having to listen to the, to these poor folks. I can't even imagine what, what those folks meant. So Mr. Walker, I'd like, I'd like to ask you something. When the emergent, can we, especially after COVID, power outages aren't going to go away. I mean, we, we know that. It would be, would be silly if we said, oh, this is all going to work out and we'll never ever have a, a power outage. We're going to have power outages when things get better. Can't, can't we, with the emergency management system, can't we get things in place? Obviously, we can't open schools right now. We can't open the Kennedy Center, which would have been a perfect ideal during, during a, a perfect scenario if, if seniors were going to have no heat for eight hours during a pretty cold, pretty cold day. Is this something that we can bring? I, I mean, if we bring it to the mayor, will he? I'm sure, if I know the mayor and, and am living in North Quincy and he's always been very good working with me with North Quincy, we need to make sure that our seniors are, are protected somehow during these. And we should already learnt a lot sooner than, 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 especially the fifteenth of February, with all the storms that we, we faced during the winter, two thousand fifteen winter and the, the flooding. Is there anything we can do? And, and one thing, waiting for an arborist? I'm telling you, we should go out and hire temporarily arborist and get those, those trees in North Quincy trimmed, across the whole city trimmed right now before the spring storms come and, and more trees fall down. Well, when I hear we're waiting for an arborist, hire temporarily an arborist. We have to do something because the, it, it's just, is Mr. Walker on?
Yes.
Yes, sorry. I'm sorry I'm hitting you this. I, I normally I, I wouldn't, I didn't have a chance to talk to you about this sooner. But I, I mean, we're hearing about the plans that are going to take place.
Yeah, Counsel, through, yeah, through you, Madam President. On the emergency notification, absolutely, Counsel. In fact, that is something we have, that is something that we've worked on with National Grid previously during prolonged outage events. They've been very good communicating with our office. I think in this particular instance, I'm not sure that there was a certainty as to how long this was going to be. I think what we have been good is that things, when they are projected to be a prolonged service issue, we have activated the emergency response messaging system. We have activated emergency shelters. We have activated our emergency response area with National Grid in the room with us. Joes, you might remember, I think it was probably two thousand twelve where we had that major storm where we lost power throughout the entire city for, I don't know if it was twenty-four hours or what it was, but the threat was there that it was going to be for twenty-four hours, potentially longer. And the cavalry was activated. I think in this particular instance, I'm not sure what the anticipation was on the ground. It could have been, perhaps communication could have been better that if they anticipated it being upwards of eight to ten hours. I don't know if that was the case or not. But Counsel, absolutely to your question, we, we can certainly do that.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, just, I mean, even if folks, if the folks knew it was going to be, if they got a call and the folks knew there was going to be eight to ten hours, they could call a friend that, you know? Because hon- honestly, I didn't know, I didn't know until it was well into the outage that it even took place because it didn't affect where I was at. So, you know, somebody could have been able, if a robo-call was able to go out, they could call, you know, phone a friend, they could call a relative, spend the night at, at somebody's house, even though we were going through, through COVID at the time, but especially family. And I think that was part of the, part of the folks frustration that I think some of us have, have actually, had actually experienced for quite, quite a, quite a, quite more than, more than a week after it took place. And, and I, I think people as, as like, as I hear the wind blowing outside right now, people, people are nervous right now even of what could possibly happen with the temperatures going down this evening into tomorrow morning. So I, I would certainly like to get together with, with, and, and I, and, and as, as a part of the, you know, DPW is, is get, get, make sure that we know that we're getting the word out to the, to the folks. Because, you know, reaching out to, some folks don't have the counselor's numbers. Some folks don't have, you know, they try calling City Hall, you know? And of course, they're in the dark. So again, I apologize if, if I seem a little frustrated to the Joes. Again, I don't mean, I'm not shooting the messages. But, you know, it, it's about, you know, the whole prob-, you know, when the problem's really, really fester is when the communication is not there. If, if we're communicating and possibly a, a little better. And we, if we can figure that out, we can make sure that we keep a lot of people safe. That's really why.
No, no apologies, Counsel Harris. I, I, I know you well. I, there is no apologies needed. As I said, I was out there and a lot of people were actually walking around. I was talking to them, trying to educate. It, it's, the one thing we have to look at is, and again, as you know, we tried to put together a presentation not to, hopefully not to bore, but try to just throw some education around it in terms of overhead underground, right? From that end, there's the men and the women out there in the trucks. They know what, what's going on. They know that's even more expectation that we don't want the power to go out, but we want to know before the power goes out, right? And, and if the power doesn't go out, I've had calls that say, well, why didn't the power go out? You know, so I'm all in for communication. I mean, it, it's trying to manage that. This one in particular, it was, it was underground where, where it was for the building. Again, that's why we're trying to get to the bottom of it. I'm the last one to try to point blame other ways because I'll stand up and I'll take it. As we went through a few, a few of the outages tonight, we noted the ones that it was on us, you know, from that end. So we're not, we're not shying away and I hear the wind and I cringe, yes. But if you look at some of the other, you know, when it gets up to fifty, sixty mile per hour, a lot of things happen, you know, from that end. I mean, the infrastructure is good, thirty-five, forty were good. When it gets up to fifty, sixty, you throw in wet snow, you throw in some, I hate to say it. I watch the weather now more than sports and I'm afraid to even watch it. And when the winds actually come from the, the west instead of a nor'easter, the trees up here, I've learned a lot, the trees actually grow into the wind. When it come in the other way, it actually now pushes them further. So there's a lot of other things thrown in. But in terms of apologizing, don't. I actually thought a lot about my action that day, you know, in, in terms of how I might have been able to communicate better. I mean, I know the DPW was out there with me. I know certain other folks had, didn't have power. And, and the mayor in your city, whether it's impacting him or elsewhere, he's probably, he's the first one that comes in with a text to me saying, Joe, power's out in whatever section, right? All the way around. So it is trying to work on that communication, especially in this day and age where everyone's on a computer. Everyone needs the computer. So I did try to think, could I have done something better out that way? You know, and again, I apologize, take it from me. I, I, I don't want, want that to happen. I, I don't want power to be out more than, more than zero minutes. But in that one, looking at it, you know, again, that's why we're actually trying to look at if that was impacted by that one customer or whatever caused, you know? Is there a way to delineate between that underground causing it? And, and that's where it's kind of getting into the underground. And when that happens, you have to give some of the folks in the substation time to do the switching safely. Because the last thing we want to do is add on to it, right? If you, we do a live wire trailer that we go around and do these things. And just, just to have people put on gloves that they're using, have them put them all the protective gear, put them up forty feet in the air with thirty mile per hour wind, throw the snow at them. You know, it, it's, it's laborious work. They're professionals. They want to do it quickly, but we have to do it safely to ensure everything is done right. And again, from when the outages and, and people might see our trucks riding around and say, what are they doing? Just putting mileage on? We're actually doing patrols to make sure that while the power is out, nothing else happened. Because the last thing we want to do is, yep, we fix the fuse or the crossarm and let's just engage it and re-energize. If we don't look down the road and a tree might have fallen and taken it down somewhere else, you may create an unsafe situation. So again, there's, there's time on it and I thank you for saying it. We, we will try to do our best, but mother nature, there's no way I can stop it. I know Counsel Macatee and I had good conversation with, with, with the father to try to, a priest to say, can you just make it go, go everything away now, make it nice? But we know it's going to happen and we're trying to do this constantly, trying to review where it is, trying to look at it. And, and again, whatever tree trim is very good. And, and you run into certain areas where a lot of leaves on it catches the snow, catches the wind. It's a lot worse than when all the trees are gone. But, you know, again, I won't belabor the point. But, and, and I do speak with Mr. Walker often. He's probably the second person that texts me when power is out anywhere in the city. So I try to make that communication with him. And that, there's always roads for improvement on that and I welcome any suggestions.
Thank you, Joe, Joe and Joe. And thank you, thank you again. Thanks. And thank you, Madam President.
First, thank you, Counsel Kane.
Thank you, Madam President. So Joe, 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 thank you all for the presentation tonight. Again, I appreciate you being here. You know, that presentation, obviously, for most people is a little esoteric in, in nature. And so I hope you'd allow me to just summarize a couple of points and intersperse some questions just for clarification. So, you know, we talked about fifteen to sixteen multi-day events, which we're gathering is out of the ordinary for the service deliverability of electricity.
That, that's correct. Basically, we're seeing weather coming in and we have to staff up. That's, that's what we're looking at for those.
And in connection to that, the factors for these outages are largely external and out of your control rather than internal. So being weather animals.
During the weather events, it's, it's, it's strictly out of our control. The majority of the outages during weather events, it's re-related.
That, so.
If, if you could make a resolution, the, the balloons that people let go in the year, they also cause a lot of outages. So if you want to make a resolution to stop balloons, that's good, but I, I digress.
Okay. Well, the environmentalist would prefer that. We'll, we'll take that on another day. But two additional questions in connection to that. So what defines a major outage?
Well, basically, we're looking at it as a type of event that we're anticipating specific amount of outages per customer. And when I had mentioned earlier that we have five types of weather events. A type five is a typical blue sky day where we're doing our regular work, where you could see something, a, a normal, normal outage. A type four is the, is been the majority of our weather events. And a, a type four event, we're anticipating that up to three percent of our customers can be out for twenty-four hours. Then we move to the next one, which is a type three, where up to ten percent of our customers can be out for up to seventy-two hours. And then we move to a type two and a type one, where we're up to seven days of outages. And, and that would just, would be very extreme levels.
Okay. I appreciate you discussing the seventy-five million dollar new transmission system. That's going to basically go through the backbone of the city. For more information on that, just to direct people to the site, because I, I did advertise the public virtual sessions that you did hold. The website is www.northquincyproject.com where there's more information on there. But this is, this is a replacement of an existing line. This isn't preventative maintenance. This is just a replacement project, correct?
Yeah, the, it's, it's time for a replacement of it. It's, it's an older style cable. It's oil-filled. We want to get that out of the, out of the ground.
How old's that, Joe?
I think it was put in in the sixties or the seventies.
Wow, okay. And so, you know, I think one of the things that, you know, at least we experienced with most of our, our water system is that it's, it's dated, it's old, we're an old city. And so I guess with the majority of the, the feeder and the transmission and distribution system, what types of, what types of preventative maintenance and how much money, I guess, does National Grid put forward for a city like Quincy of its size on a, on a, and what's that frequency?
Well, basically, I mean, we do have a budget each year for distribution upgrades. And we have to determine of where we're seeing the outages and where we're going to put the money. About, I'm going to say now, I was in Quincy, it was probably about ten, fifteen years ago that we, that we spent over another hundred million of dollars of upgrading all of the underground feeders that were coming out of the North Quincy Sub. They were, they were, as Newport Ave goes like this, the feeders started going like that underneath and the conduit started moving. So we upgraded everything back then. So we're, we're looking at a few good years of reliability. Now, as we see that we've had some issues this year, now when engineering completes their design, it will go, and, and I should have mentioned it, you know, he's, he's looking at some short-term things. It'll now go to our long-term planning. And actually, our planning engineer is, is listening in tonight, Joe Henry. I failed to mention him at the beginning, another, another Joe is listening in tonight. And his group will be looking at if we need to do long-term issues with those feeders. Do we need to change out the cable? Do we have to go in there and look at the splices in the manholes? And then we could be talking millions of dollars to change out each feeder and upgrade each feeder, change the cable out.
And so on the feeder issues, you said that there's reporting to the DPU. And is that a self-reporting requirement or does DPU come and do inspections?
Well, we have, we have metrics that we report each year to the DPU. Well, we have, we have metrics that we um report each year to the DPU. Um, and we have poor performing feeders that have to be reported to them. And if those poor performing feeders continue, then the DPU fines us. And comes comes after us for not making the repairs. So it it's very important, obviously, from the standpoint, we don't want the outages, we never want the outages. And there's also fines that can be issued if we're not out there making the repairs.
Okay. Um, two more sections here. So on the tree trimming, you said you're waiting for for permitting. And uh, when did you apply for that permitting?
Um, well, actually, we we had two different projects. We've held off on some of the end of projects, and I think the eleven W one was one of them. Um, so that we pushed it to this fiscal year. Our fiscal year starts April for us. Um, so we've had, we've had some feeders in with the with the avarice now for a couple of months where we want to get the the permit signed off on. Um, there's been some back and forth between the avarice and our avarice on uh specifications. And that and I know the city avarice's um job is to make sure that we don't do too much trimming, that we don't ruin trees. And our avarice is looking at the fact that, okay, we got to get them trimmed and we we need to make sure that we have clearances around them. So there's some back and forth going on.
Okay.
And and just Counselor, just add on to that, we we have been working, we uh, these are like major feeder runs where you're running down all the streets. We have been working uh and have permits where we we see other areas uh and we have been working on those. Uh, and we also have a hazard tree program. So the permits are are aligned in terms of what we're doing here. These are the much larger ones that we're looking at, um, you know, and trying to coordinate that from that from that end. So uh, we haven't gotten permits, we have been doing trees, these are the much larger ones.
Okay, I just want to make sure that this wasn't a city holdup for issues that could be taken care of that would prevent uh, you know, further outages from occurring.
We we're actively working to uh to get that, as Joe mentioned, the, you know, coming up. Uh, and again, it's uh tough to do it during the January, February, when we're always in storm. So we're trying to line it all the way up uh from that and to try to be coordinated, especially if there's any other work going on along the area. Uh, but the intent is try to get it done, again, as you mentioned before, it's, you know, get heavily leafed, uh, and you run it to more in the later part of the hurricane season, then June, July, August, that type of thing. So it's going on.
Um, and so the last part is on communication. So some of the things that I've heard from our residents is that they've reached out to National Grid to get more information, to speak to a human, and they're not having any luck. And so I'm I'm curious, or, you know, can you sort of highlight, how does the staff on the customer service? Do you have a robust customer service staff that is responsive to folks? Um, or, you know, how how does that typically work?
We have, we have a couple of things. Usually, um, every storm, when we talk about these fifteen major storms, they staff up at a higher level for these events. They they expect to get phone calls. But we also have, um, you know, outage maps that people can go online to get information. And I know sometimes that's tough. If you lose your power, how am I going to go on? How am I going to go online?
Or if you don't go online?
Or if you don't go online, yeah, exactly. Um, but usually, again, we're we're staffed up so that we're we're able to take the calls. If we have major storm events that come through, sometimes the 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 calls are a little too much and it 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 does cause a backlog. Um, and I think that's when it it it's time for, that's a major event, that's 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 time for our community liaison to to get involved and to to find out from the from the city, okay, we're having issues here, let's get some information out there. Um, and and I think that might be on on us to to make sure that um all the councils are getting the information in a timely fashion so that you can reach out to.
Yep, you bring me to a great point, um, which is please keep us in the loop where, you know, I I know it's probably um difficult to communicate with so many folks during an emergency uh situation. But, you know, we're the people that are closest to the residents. And so uh we get people calling us as soon as these things happen and we get emails too. So the quicker that we do have information, and Joe Cardinal, as you know, I reach out to you as soon as something happens so we can figure it out. But um even if we can fit a a list distribution together for the councils, or I don't know how you communicate with Mr. Walker outside of the informal text, but that would be very useful to allow us to communicate because we end up becoming the customer service department for National Grid. And, you know, it's, I I do want to again reiterate that National Grid is the private company that provides the residents with their service, and this is not the city. And so, you know, we become the middle people and the more information that we have, um, you know, the better that we can liaise. But obviously, uh, tonight was was a fact-finding mission. This was a way for us to communicate more details to our residents to make sure that we're doing something because that's the position that we get put in. So I appreciate your being here, I appreciate the information. I'll pass it back to um Madam President, my colleagues have other questions.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCarthy.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, and good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for um the presentation tonight. And I want to thank Counselor Kane to uh if things were perfect, it's good to get in front of you, in front of each other and um and talk a little bit about how National Grid operates in the city. Um, I just had a couple of things and it was, um, I'm the counselor in Ward One, um, for the gentlemen on here that don't know this. And one of the areas down there, the Rock Island Cove area in Howes Neck. Um, you know, and I'm not talking about a a big storm, we could have a windy night like tonight. It seems like it's very vulnerable. It seems like it's the first section that always seems to go out. Now, I don't think it goes out um for a long period of time. But I I wanted to see if I could get someone from N Grid to take a look at the Rock Island Cove area. Just to make sure it is just, um, you know, a wet tree branch or a um uh a tree itself that that might be causing an issue down there. Because um Rock Island Road runs up to a high level overlooking the the Four River and um it could be just that. Um, I think one thing we got to remember is that we live in Quincy, we don't live in Vermont, and we get wet snow. We get ugly wet snow. And um, that's usually the number one problem when we're all watching the weather. When they say that it's heart attack snow and wet snow common in tree branches, we know that we're probably going to have a power outage. So that's, that's the first thing I just wanted to see if, if somebody could just look into that area. Uh, Spring Street, Rock Island Road, Rockland Street area. That seems to uh be be a weak link. Um, and again, all the areas are vulnerable down there. And, you know, all in all, I honestly, you know, and I'll probably have people disagreeing with me, but I think National Grid does a heck of a job. Uh, when the weather does come in and cause havoc, as it did uh two thousand eighteen with um the floods that we had down there. Uh, you guys came in on a Friday night, the power went out at quarter of seven. Uh, that weekend, the power was back on except for the the areas that really got devastated like Post Island, etc. So turn something around in forty-eight hours, um, i- i- is pretty good. And uh, you guys are 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 always on the scene. The other thing I want to swing back to Counselor Kane talking about trim train, the tree trimming, excuse me. Are we holding that up? Is the city holding that up in regards or am I missing something there?
We we're having the, you know, again, we're we're having active conversations in terms of coordinating. Um, the uh roughly, I think Joe said almost a hundred and thirty-one miles uh that we're looking at in twenty twenty-two, which is beginning in April. Uh, so we're 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 kind of working through that. Um, and again, if there's any restrictions, we'll certainly let you know, but we're trying to be uh, you know, coordinating all the activity going on out there. Um, but in terms of your earlier comment, the Rock Island, I'll certainly uh with Joe and and Joe Henry, uh, the three Joes will certainly look at that. Uh, and and uh from that end, just to make sure that, I appreciate the comments, I, uh, we did have the liaison on that flood out there. And uh, um, there was a lot of activity. In fact, I think some of the folks, some of our gas folks got stuck out in the uh other side, had to get, come back on the raft. But uh with with regard to working through the avarice and the city and the tree, um, you know, again, we're certainly looking. Quincy is one of uh our largest cities that we deal with uh on the electric side. Um, and that's thus, it results in that high number of miles that we're trying to do. And again, there's a lot of coordination as the city is also doing activities. And and we want to make sure it's well-coordinated, uh, well-timed. Um, and again, not impacting it to the uh to the concern or any issues with your residents or constituents.
Okay, Joe. Uh, Mr. Walker, do you want to comment? You came off of mute like faster than I've ever seen you.
I thought maybe the the question was going to be to it to me, Counselor, but uh.
Well, go right ahead.
I'm good.
Okay. Um, no, that's all I have uh for N Grid. I think you guys do a great job. Uh, you know, weather's weather. Uh, it's great to uh get the system upgraded, uh, the Field Street. Uh, the North Quincy Project is going to be, you know, quite a project, but it's um, it's due. Uh, you know, just like the project we kept going on C Street right now, Joe, down to La Brec Field. They need gas pressure and that's the only way to take care of it. So uh, all good. Um, one other place down there, um, off of Winthrop Street, um, Brighton, Brighton Street, it's a little side street. I tried to get some tree trimming down there through the city, and I don't know if they ever got to it. And I think they came back and I think it was uh a lot of branches and a lot of entanglement with wires. So uh, if someone from N Grid could take a look at Brighton, it's a little, it's a little uh dead end there off of Winthrop. I'd appreciate it.
Yep, so we got it. Thank you, Counselor.
Also, Counselor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Counselor Debona.
Just real quick while I have you guys, thanks for the presentation, Joe and Joe. Um, I figured I'd get it from my distinguished colleagues from Ward Four, but I didn't tonight. Um, the double poles, um, how, how is your jurisdiction on the uh the extra pole that's sitting next to the pole? Um, how are we doing on those and how you guys doing with that?
So Counselor, actually, I have, I have good news. I mean, it it happened a little while ago, but we changed a lot of the um the installation process in the city of Quincy. What way it was handled before was Verizon would come out, set the pole, they would leave. National Grid would have to come out, transfer their wires, we would leave. City of Quincy would have to transfer their streetlight, they they would leave and then on down Comcast, Verizon, then we would come back out and pull the pole. Horrible process, took too long, the double poles were sitting out there too long. We've switched the process up. National Grid now does the install of the new pole. So as soon as we do the install and I'm and, you know, say we have a street that we're we're updating. If we install three or four poles, we'll put the poles in, we'll come back as soon as, you know, the next week, we'll transfer our wires. We'll cut the pole down above the the streetlight and then it's, then it's there for the city of Quincy. And then everybody else does the transfer. And when Verizon is complete, Verizon removes the double pole. So the double poles uh disappear quicker. The system works a lot better and a lot quicker this way. Um, I did take a look today at the numbers. Um, I think right now there is about sixty-one double poles in the city of Quincy. Uh, that's way down from what we've had in years past. I I know I've come before the council before, we've had two hundred poles in in one ward of of double poles. Uh, now we're down to sixty-one citywide. That basically tells us that we're out there working. Uh, are we ever going to get the double poles down to zero? Unfortunately, probably not because we're out there changing poles, we're we're upgrading areas where, you know, uh, there's new fiber being added to the poles where we have to upgrade the poles. So it it's constant. But I'm happy to say that we're down to sixty-one. I'd love to see it a little bit lower. And hopefully we can, we can get to that point, but that that's a good number at at this time.
Thanks for your update. I mean, I, ever since I've been on the city council, I mean, my distinguished colleague from Ward Four, Brian Pamoche would say, what about these poles? What are we going to do? You know, so seeing you saying it's going from two hundred per ward, which could be two hundred times six, which is, what's that, twelve hundred out there, we're down to sixty-one double poles right now? So where do you think the majority of them are sitting right now in the city of Quincy? Do you have a designated area where, okay, we need work in that area, we need to, we need to go after that?
I mean, I, I can look at the the double pole database and I know exactly where where they are. Um, I just, I just don't have them in front of me. I just wanted to do a quick number today, just to make sure I had it tonight in case I was asked. Um, but but basically, it's, you know, it's where the, where we're doing an upgrade. If we have an area where we have to change, um, change some e- areas out, we're going to install three or four poles, we're going to, we're going to work in them. My guess is the sixty-one is probably pretty spread out. Uh, we don't have any large projects going on right now. So I would imagine that a lot of them are just in in little pockets here and there.
Sure. Is there any way of us, um, can you get it, can you get a list, if they could, Joe, of those double pole areas throughout the city of Quincy? I mean, as an at-large, I I I'd like to take care of all sixty-one. Um, but it would just give us a better understanding of where we need to tackle the areas in the city. Um, and going forward, I'm happy to hear that you're, you're, you're taking on this new um mitigation of of the poles on you, you putting in the lines and then and then taking it out after you're done, which is great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Pamoche.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I only feel compelled to speak with the whole name. But the double poles have gotten better. I I've certainly noticed that. Mr. Carroll, I just wanted to ask you, um, in terms of the budgeting, what um what is the year-over-year uh difference between the maintenance been for this area? I mean, how do you break, first of all, how do you break it out? How do you break out the budget? Like, what's the um? Is it Massachusetts, Eastern Massachusetts? How is it broken up?
It it's broken up, um, almost kind of going back, not really service, sort of early, you had a pole set in Mass Electric, right from that end. Um, so we look at that. Um, you also have, we deal with Nantucket, Island Nantucket. So i- it's different budgets from that, from that area. Um, but you're not, you know, it's not like, all right, all of National Grid, right? Not Rhode Island, Mass, it's not all in one. It's it's strictly put at um one area. Uh, it's in the Cornwallton, Massachusetts. And then you, then you kind of break it down even further from budgetary because you may have different aspects in Western Mass, like a western from that end. Um, totally different from, say, Groton going out there far. And and then you come back in here, right? Where you're dealing with uh not so much suburban but bourbon, right? Urban meaning Quincy. Um, might, you might see a way with, um, you know, we we have roughly forty-six thousand meters customers in Quincy. Um, closer to that is Fall River, right? Right around the same number, a way of it somewhere around twenty-six, twenty-seven. So it's not like it's just thrown in, it's a free-for-all. Uh, it's thrown in because we are regulated. We have to look and we have to ensure we're spending the money in the right place. We have to ensure that we're addressing issues that were found. Um, and it it's a budget that isn't being drawn or taken away. Um, and in light of what we've talked a lot about now, you see a lot of tree trimming. Uh, there's a lot of trees that are growing further, right? So, I mean, that budget's constantly getting increased, constantly getting looked at from that end. So in terms of, you know, numbers, it's not just a matter of arbitrarily just picking a number and saying, you have to stick with it, right? Uh, Quincy is one of the most active areas that we have, um, especially the widespread. Uh, and and you do see some of it where it's uh different, right? Hills, uh, trees, and also you have the coastal side. So it's, you you encompass a a fair amount of the whole geographical aspect that we look at from when we come into um infrastructure replacement. Uh, Joe mentioned just two of the feeders, right, in terms of coming after it, uh, putting in, looking at that. Uh, we're talking about the underground where we're looking at the seventy-six million just on that project standalone from that end. So that doesn't even come into play for what it is. Uh, it probably doesn't answer, I know you're in terms of specific numbers. I can get you the specific, but I'm just trying to kind of give you a snapshot of what we're looking at.
No, I I appreciate that. And I'm, I'm going to go easy on you. I know you're still mad at me about the subpoenas. I uh, I mean, that was always the, that's always been the knock, right? Is when there's a big storm, um, you know, hurricane or whatever, and power's out for a significant period of time. The knock on National Grid is that uh there's not enough of that routine maintenance going on, right? So it's a number of years ago, wasn't there a a big reduction in in the um staff that that performs that sort of work? In terms of all, one, didn't, didn't you have a reduction in staff in the last five or so years uh of the staff who performed the routine maintenance?
Not, not on the electric, no, no, no. Uh, and even not on the gas either. I mean, it it's, um, and it's actually a- a- again, the men and women that are out there doing the work, whether it's uh the overhead, um, substation, underground. You know, i- it's one where it takes a lot of training to do that. Um, you just don't come in and it's it's. And it's, as Joe referenced, it's a great analogy in terms of your house, right? You just, you don't want to be the one that's putting in your, your box downstairs, right? You need someone licensed. Within that area of working outside, you also need someone licensed for primary, right? It's not secondary. So there's a lot of training going into that. And, and it is a robust trying to ensure that. Um, I think, uh, in the earlier presentation, uh, in terms of, I think, actually Counselor Kane in terms of. You know, the younger, the older, it's like they're fifty-year-old kind of getting up there. I mean, it, it's that change in workforce, right? And, and to take calls or auto work on that, it's something that, it takes a lot of training. Uh, we're trying to put a lot of money in terms of not only stem, but trying to get interest, uh, ensuring that we have a workforce that wants to continue. So in terms of reduction, uh, there's no way we can, no way. Uh, in terms of, you know, looking at storms for. After what went wrong, there's always that period where you have to look at it. Uh, we do a lot of helicopter flying after storms just to get a more visual. Um, in some of our areas, we have a lot more right aways, meaning they're traveling through. The way it was designed back in the uh, older days, they put it through right aways where it's a lot tougher to get through that, um, you know, going in that way. But yeah, we do look at that, but we're seeing a lot more activity, so we're trying to get a little bit more hardening. Some areas you want to put spacer wires that you see it's running like four wires. Um, some areas you, you don't want to do it from that end. So there's a lot of that going on, but in terms of reduction, um, I, I know, um. I didn't see it on the electric side and I know even on the gas side, we just went through a very aggressive hiring as well. Into, in anticipation of, you know, as the workforce changes.
Okay. Well, I mean, that, that's really my only, um, my only inquiry was in terms of keeping up with that regular maintenance. Because I, I feel as though, you know, you Google National Grid power outage maintenance. I mean, it's. That's kind of the knock is anytime that there's a significant power outage, and not just Massachusetts, anywhere across the country that you guys are located. You know, it seems the knock is that there's not enough routine maintenance. I, I, I have to say, I, I heard from a resident today. Who emailed me and, and told me that um, on Upton and on Bartlett, there's been power outages. But um, that's, yeah, I've only heard from one constituent about uh, power outages in terms of South and West Quincy. Uh, and I, and I haven't experienced it myself, so um, you know, stand in unity with my, my fellow ward counselors here. But I, I don't have any specific complaint for you tonight. I'll try and think of some for the next time I see you, okay?
I'm sure, I, I would imagine you would. Um, and I, and you have my number, we can always talk about that. I'll, I'll look into Upton as well.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, counselor. I'm gonna just keep an eye out to if anybody else has any other questions or comments. Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Joe, Joe and Joe, um, for presenting here tonight. I just want to. Leave you with this and just echoing Counselor Kane's sentiment to please add us to that notification list, um, because he's absolutely right. The second something goes out, we get that phone call. Um, can't remember the number of times that I've had to go on the website. And, and try to report an outage for a constituent who can't get online or doesn't understand how to work the platform. And so, um, it would be really helpful if we. Were prepared and equipped with that information ahead of time, so that when people do reach out to us, we're not scrambling. To catch ourselves up before responding and that's, that does cut down the time it takes for us to be able to get back to constituents to be helpful as well. So that's just my ask that I'd like to second, and I thank you again for your time.
Madam President, Joe Cardinal and I will certainly take that measure and ensure it's certainly uh, something that's very important to us to communicate. As well as to you. So thank you for the time and allowing us, uh, and we'll make sure that we kept it, we, we, we will keep the names at Joe's. Uh, for the next hearing, whoever called, all right, to make it easier.
Sounds good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number two, twenty twenty-one dash zero two-two, an appropriation for two million. One hundred thousand for sewer and drainage rehabilitation for emergency repairs to the Town Brook Culvert.
Thank you. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I think we have Woodard and Curran on. Um, I see Joe Shea, I think the other gentleman, Dave White's on. Um. This was brought up, um, recently and as we can see in this, in this order, um, it's, um. It's critical that this emergency repairs get done over on Bigelow over in Ward two. Uh, I know that I talked to Counsel Leon Tronico earlier today, uh, talking to Al Graziosso and company. And I think, uh, Joe Shea and Dave White were gonna be here if anybody needed any questions, but. The um, the culvert, the townbrook that runs pretty much um, underneath Bigelow, right by the, the nursing home. Is uh, in severe need of repair. Um, you know, could possibly have a cave-in over there. So, um, they want to jump on this quickly, so I'd like to make a motion tonight to approve this two point one million. Coming out of the water of our sewer enterprise account to have these guys jump on this as soon as possible. I don't know if Mr. Walker wants to say anything or Mr. Graziosso wants to say anything, but um, I think it's something that um. Needs to be done sooner than later. So I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you. I have a motion made to approve. Um, do we have a second? Second by Counsel Falen. I also see your hand raised. Um, I do want to give you the floor before I turn it over to Mr. Graziosso. Uh, or Mr. Walker, anybody else who has any questions, um, or comments they'd like to make. So, Mr. Falen.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Uh, this happens to be an area that is the line between Ward two and Ward five. Most of the work is actually in Ward five. And I was on the phone with both Joe Shea, Al Graziosso earlier. So this area can be acceptable to some really bad flooding. And over the years, it has really flooded out. And if something happened with this culvert, it would really create a mess in that neighborhood. And they've, they've had a put up with a lot with the, with the townbrook. So I, I am. I'm, you know, they're gonna explain it, but I'm gonna urge the, they've already talked to me about it. But I'm gonna urge the counselors that this is an emergency situation, that we really need to move this forward. And I'm thinking of the people that live down there and the flooding that could result if uh, if the culvert isn't fixed. Uh, immediately. So um, you know, I wanted to second it and um, I know, I know Counsel Leon Tronico is also on and. You know, I, I think that this is like the dividing line right between two wards. But it is something that would dramatically affect those people in that area and has over the years. So I'm gonna urge the counselors to vote for it. That's one of the reasons I seconded it. I would hope that we're able to move this forward tonight. But I understand that we're gonna leave it open to, for an explanation and everything. Uh, I, I thank the counselors for their time.
Thank you, Counsel Falen. Counsel Leon Tronico.
Thank you, Madam President. And likewise, yes, uh, the Ward two, Ward five line, uh, is actually right on Bigelow Street there. Uh, and similar to the sentiments that Counselor Falen, Counselor McCarthy expressed tonight, I strongly urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this measure tonight. Um, you know, just looking at the photos, it looks like that is about to burst and we uh, much rather act on it sooner than later. To avoid uh, an emergency situation, uh, to potentially cost uh, more funding uh, down the line. It's, I think, important to get this done as soon as possible. So with that, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues before I turn it over to the amazing group that I see down here? Okay, so Al, Joe, Paul, Holly and David, and even you, Mr. Walker, um, you're all co-hosts and you can unmute yourselves. I welcome you to jump in and provide any additional information before we move forward.
For you, Madam President, just quickly before I hand it over to Commissioner Graziosso, just the funding source on this. Because I don't think that the team was gonna get into that. I just want to be very clear that this is the sewer water rehab fee. Uh, which is money paid into a fee that is from developers. Um, it's a percentage of the building construction cost that goes into a fee. So it is not general fund money, it's not enterprise money. It doesn't go back to the rate pair. Um, with that, I appreciate the indulgence. I hand it over to the commissioner.
Thank you, uh, through you, Madam President. I think everyone has said, uh, Mr. Walker just spoke, uh, on the Sewer Drain Rehab Fund. And uh, Counsel McCarthy eloquently stated the issue. You know, we have done a recent assessment, um, to that. Area that runs between Bigelow and Washington Street. And uh, there are definitely structural deficiencies. That uh, I believe are, uh, you know, uh, when, it's an emergency situation. Um, so um, I think we have to do immediate repairs. Uh, I would be happy to turn this over though to David White and to Joe. Uh, they could answer any questions or get into the uh, technical. Portions of the structure there, uh, to uh, give a better explanation. And with that, I, I'd be happy to turn it over to David.
David, are you able to unmute yourself?
I will, I will jump in as David unmutes. Uh, this is Joe Shea. Um, one of the elements to keep in mind here is that the, the, the city has systematically been improving Town Brook. All the way from, from Lowe's and Deco and Ward four, all the way down. Um, as part of these emergency repairs, we want to be clear that uh, that these do not. Cut off any of the longer-term systematic improvements we continue to do on Town Brook. Uh, they were discovered as part of, of an annual ongoing evaluation, except the. The deterioration from what we observed in twenty nineteen to what you see in those photos, it's happened very quickly, so we need to get in and remedy. But we continue the long-term systematic improvements of this brook. Because Town Brook from all the way up at the Quincy Adams T Station, all flows through this neighborhood. So this neighborhood is an, an important component to, to the whole city. And as we discovered, it also is the, is the dividing point for three different wards. Um, with that, David, do you like to speak to some of the technical components?
I'm certainly be happy to. Um, I, I have a brief presentation here that I'll share my screen, um. And introduce the issue to you. Um, so, is my screen showing?
It is, yes.
Okay, great. Um, this is, this is the area, we, the DPW did a structural inspection through a consultant. Um, latest past in twenty twenty, we, we see the report in February. And that inspection was from the portion of the Town Brook which is cul- culverted. Starting at um, Bigelow Street at this location here, and running north under Washington. Under the Bagnell Auto Pot Store where it daylights, um, just north of the Bagnell Auto Pot Store. It's about an eight hundred foot section of the culvert. Um, through those inspections, we identified that there were some serious structural deficiencies. In spot locations along this highlighted section, which is about five hundred feet of the culvert. And the predominant issue with, the structural issue is with the roof of the structure. Um, this is an indication of the type of failure that is expected to occur in several locations have, if it goes unchecked. This is a um, photo of the, the failure that occurred in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, where you can see the main carrying beam that carries the roof across the brook had completely failed. Our current inspections are showing similar types of deterioration. This photo here is showing the lower reinforcing steel in this concrete beam has completely torn off the beam. And is now in structural stress and is in a position of imminent failure. Um, this particular section is located, um, in that southern section of that highlighted area that I'd shown in the previous photo. Um, further north, going towards Washington Street, the structure changes to a steel beam. And here you can see some severe deterioration of what really is old railroad ties, the, our tracks. Being used to support the roof structure. This is the beam seat here and you can see the severe deterioration of the beams. You can see through some of the beams and there's very little bearing capacity left on the, on the structure itself. Um, another section of the concrete roof, um, th- these are two beams, one the foreground is in its original position. Although you can see the reinforcing steel has been severely corroded and is about to, to shear. The beam behind it has settled four inches and the reinforcing steel is completely severed. Again, leading to a similar um, outcome as the original photo that I showed you. And lastly, this is another beam of similar construction where the reinforcing steel has completely shared. You can see it's crack, cracked through the entire depth of the beam. And these are, you know, these types of structural stresses. Um, were identified by the structural engineers being poor and serious. Um, the city is undertaking some restrictions on the use of the surfaces above this culvert in the short term. Um, but in the long term, it's gonna require to go in and replace some of these roof sections.
All right, thank you. Um, any other questions or comments from my colleagues before we move on? Okay, saying that, so we have a motion to approve by Counsel McCarthy, second by Counsel Falen. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counsel Leon Tronico.
Yes.
Counsel Keen.
Yes.
Counsel Debona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, please.
Number three, twenty twenty-one dash zero two-three, order a home roof petition. An act regarding the issuance of a pension obligation bonds or notes.
Thank you, Counsel Leon Tronico.
I'd like to make a motion to place this into the ordinance committee.
Okay, do we have a second? Second by Counsel McCarthy. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll move that into ordinance. Next item on the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
Number four, twenty twenty-one dash zero two-four, in ordinance renaming a portion of Glover Avenue to Father Harry Way.
Thank you. Counsel Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, um, I'd like to uh, move this, make a motion to approve uh, this. Father Harry um, influenced so many of the lives of his, of his congregations throughout his many years of service. Uh, especially at Sacred Heart where uh, um, that portion of Glover, uh, will be. So, uh, I'm honored to, to make this, that motion and uh, of the renaming of um, that portion of Glover Ave. To Father Harry Way. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Palmucci, I also see your hand raised.
Uh, yes, I was gonna, I was gonna second, but I also wanted to speak on the motion.
Okay. Well, we have a second already, but, no, no worries. We have a second by Counsel McCarthy, but go ahead.
If, if I can on the motion, um, I was uh, I was disappointed, um. Last week to, to read some of the mayor's comments in the Quincy Sun about the um, the recent vote that the council took in support of an ordinance. To create a, a social justice position in the, in the city, the social justice department in the city. Um, and the mayor's comments were that uh, he doesn't believe that there is a need, which I, I respectfully disagree with. After having hearings, um, summer discussion, the discussion groups over the summer that we had, um. I, I, I beg to differ. I think there is a, I think there is a need. Again, I'm not, I'm not saying the city's doing anything wrong. But I think we can do better. Uh, I think we, we can all step back, look outside ourselves and, and. And really evaluate uh, from different perspectives, what happens in the city and how the city interacts with people. Now, I, I'm not gonna vote against this, um, this particular measure. Uh, I'm sure Father Harry is worthy of such an honor. I don't know, I don't, not familiar with him personally. But um, but I trust, um, I trust that he's worthy of such an honor and that he's had a positive impact on, on our community. But, but seeing this on the agenda and having read the mayor's words last week, um, it really made me, made me think that. You know, we have Muslim mosques in this city, we have Buddhist temples in this city. We have Protestant and Baptist churches, among other places of worship. Yet the city, as far as I know, and please, someone correct me if you know differently. The city only has streets named after Catholic priests. I know of at least one in Ward four. I'm not aware of any street named after any other faith leader from any other denomination in the entire city. So while the mayor may say he doesn't see a need, I, I, again, I respectfully disagree. This, this is what it's about. It's about people who, who aren't Catholic and how they interact with the government. How they see their city government, um, taking actions, right? I mean, I don't know. I, I mean, listen, I was raised Catholic, so uh, I'm not the, the. the aggrieved party here, right? And that's not what I'm saying, because I don't think, I don't think to give someone a benefit and not someone else that there's an aggrievement issue, right? I think that equity is about making sure that you give everybody that same um that same opportunity and that same level of respect, at least in my mind, in this regard, that's what it is.
Madam Chair, point of order?
Go ahead councillor McCarthy.
You know, I I know we're naming a street after a uh Catholic priest, but we're off on a religious conversation here that I don't think really.
What's the point of order?
The point of order is the the topic you're talking about. We're talking about naming a street and you're making accusations that we're just picking that Catholics are the only ones getting named the streets. And I don't know if you have any information to back that up.
So tell me a street named after another uh leader.
No, that's what I'm asking you.
Okay, okay, this is where.
You have no idea.
Okay.
You have no idea.
Councillors, councillors, I'm going to exercise my muting rights right now. Both of you know that I don't like this kind of dialogue when we're jumping in just to attack one another. You all know also that I try to leave the space open for each and every single one of you to talk about issues that are important to you more often than not. And I think we can all attest to the fact that we've all had the opportunity to jump in sometimes to express our thoughts and feelings on something, even if it feels like it may not be directly impacted to the topic here. But I give you guys the opportunity to do so. So I would ask that we continue to respect that of one another, and I will exercise the mute, the the mute option if we're gonna talk over each other. I don't, I don't like us talking over one another. And I think we need to remind ourselves that we are here to be respectful of each other as well. So with that, councillor Palmucci, I'm gonna give it to you to to finish up your thought.
With all due respect, I had the floor, you allowed someone to interrupt me who didn't actually make a point of order for you to rule upon. So it, when it's my floor, I'm gonna continue to speak unless there's a proper point of order that's been raised.
No, and I gave him the opportunity, councillor, with all due respect, I gave him the opportunity to to say point of order and jump in if he needed to. But again, when people are talking over one another, regardless of what the topic is or what the issue is, I don't like when folks are talking over one another, and that's what I was trying to put a stop to, just to put some clarity out there.
And so out of respect to to councillor McCarthy, I'll I'll simply object to this matter. I don't have a problem with with Father Harry, and I'm sure he's, he deserves his honor. But if I'm being accused of of talking uh without the basic knowledge that I need, I will res- I will respectfully defer to councillor McCarthy and suggest that, yes, my understanding is that we don't, but let's get an actual answer to that. So I'll object to this, and we'll ask the administration to come back at the next council meeting uh and provide the answer as to whether or not there are any other public streets named after any other faith leaders. So I object to that.
So the item is objected to, madam clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Madam, point of order, madam president?
Yes, councillor Harris.
Um I'd like to ask the the clerk, I believe when you do an objection, it has to be done um during the reading of of the of the uh of of the.
Of the item itself?
The item itself, and um it was already already spoken to. The opportunity to object was during its reading, and I believe that I'm I'm correct in this matter.
Okay, I appreciate the question, madam clerk, can you clarify?
He is in fact correct, however, um in past practice, we have talked about things, then they've been objected, um you know, in the middle, and it's come back at the next meeting.
Okay, so with that, then, just following best practices of what we've done on this body before, I'm going to allow it to be objected, we'll come back onto the agenda for the following meeting. Madam clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number five, twenty twenty-one dash zero two-five, a resolve for the Quincy College update during COVID.
Thank you, councillor Palmucci, I know that you had spoken to councillor Mahoney, who unfortunately uh could not be here with us tonight, did you wanna speak to these items for her?
Uh yes, uh if I could, I think um we've all had the matter in our um, you know, in the package, I think we all know what it is. I'd ask that um this be referred to ordinance committee, uh this resolve be forwarded to the ordinance committee and to the administration for follow-up. I think uh councillor Mahoney is uh is um admirably looking for some information as to how the COVID uh pandemic has impacted uh the enrollment and the finances of Quincy College, especially uh with some of the the matters that we're on tonight regarding the pension and how that's gonna impact us. But I'd ask that it um on behalf of councillor Mahoney and her family, uh emergency tonight, that it be referred to ordinance committee.
Okay, so we have a motion to move to ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Andronico, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item moves to ordinance, madam clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number six, twenty twenty-one dash zero two-six, a resolve update on land purchases for proposed safety headquarters.
Thank you, councillor Palmucci.
Yes, again, this is uh councillor Mahoney's uh resolve seeking an update on uh purchases of land that the city is making in order to uh build the proposed safety headquarters that the council has uh partially funded thus far. I'd ask that this be uh referred to ordinance committee for follow-up and sent to the administration for any additional information necessary.
Okay, so we have a motion to move to ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Andronico, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the item moves to ordinance. Okay, um approval of previous meeting minutes, this is from February eighth, twenty twenty-one, and it was included in all of your packets. Um so do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Approve.
Motion to approve by councillor Phelan, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Andronico, any questions or comments on the meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the meeting minutes passed, communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers and city boards, madam clerk.
Yes, um I do have a couple of utility requests to refer to the public works committee for scheduling and advertising, grant a location for Mass Electric at two ten Adam Street, and a grant a location for Verizon, New England for four eighty Center Street.
Thank you, madam clerk, any other communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers or city boards? Okay, seeing none, unfinished business and proceeding meeting? Seeing none, reports of committees, councillor Andronico will go to you first, and then councillor Harris, councillor Andronico.
Thank you, madam president, uh there were a few items within the ordinance committee that I'd like to bring out that previously received a positive recommendation uh regarding traffic requests that were advertised publicly in the February eleventh Quincy Sun. Uh first is item twenty twenty-one dash zero one-three, add always stop at intersection of Brooks Ave and Liberty Street.
Thank you, is item, motion to approve, thank you, thank you, do we have a second? Anyone?
Second.
Thank you councillor Kane, any questions or comments on this item? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes.
Uh I'd also like to make a motion that we approve item twenty twenty-one dash zero one-four, add four-way stop at intersection of Brooks Ave and Roberts Street.
And you're making a motion to approve as well?
Correct.
Second.
Great, do we have a second, second by councillor Kane, any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes.
I'd also like to make a motion to approve item twenty twenty-one dash zero one-five, add four-way stop at intersection of Cottage Ave, Dennis Ryan Parkway, Foster Street and Chestnut Street.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Harris, any questions or comments on this item? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes.
I'd also like to make a motion to approve um twenty twenty dash zero one-six at handicap parking at eleven Ditmar Street.
Okay, motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Harris, any questions or comments on this item? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes.
The last item, I'd like to make a motion to approve item twenty twenty-one dash zero one-seven, uh add four-way stop sign on Huckins Ave, intersection with Valley Road.
Second.
Thank you, second by councillor Harris, any questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, I appreciate it, councillor Harris.
Okay, this um reports, uh public hearing was held prior to this evening's uh city council meeting at seven twenty-five when council ordered twenty twenty dash zero one-two utility grant location Mass Electric, uh Verizon, two oh two Copland Street. Positive recommendation from the public works committee, motion for approval.
Thank you, we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Kane, any questions or comments on this item? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, seeing none, item passes, any other items, councillor Harris?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, any other reports of committees? Okay, moving on, presentation of petitions, memorials and remonstrance. Okay, seeing none, I just want to um ask folks who are tuning in and and obviously ask folks who will be watching tomorrow to just keep in mind, our colleague uh who was not here this evening, uh councillor Mahoney, she had a loss, a sudden loss in the family, and more information will follow, of course, for those who wanna reach out. But just in the meantime, uh if folks can just keep our our colleague and our thoughts, I appreciate it. Um any motions, orders and resolutions? Okay, scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings? All right, so we have our next meeting convening on Monday, March fifteenth, um and do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Thank you, good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.